...five animals, section five dash three A, roaming and nuisance animals. Letter A. I'm gonna read what's in the notice and then the parts that are new, I'll identify as such. No owner of any animal shall allow such animal to create a nuisance or roam at large within town while it is not in control by means of a leash. New language. Not to exceed eight feet in length, held continuously in the hands of a responsible person capable of controlling it. End new section. Now the old section. Provided that nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or prohibit the use of hunting dogs during the open hunting or training season, or any animal while performing or being exhibited in a bench show or exhibition. New language. This does not apply to lawfully owned farm animals. Also new section. It shall be unlawful and an infraction of this chapter for any person within the town of Portland to allow any animal to roam uninvited on private property owned by someone other than the owner of the animal. End new section. A copy of the proposed ordinance was available for public inspection on file in the town clerk's office located on the ground floor in the Portland Town Hall at thirty-three East Main Street and online at www-portlandct.org. And this was dated the twenty-second of February two thousand and eighteen. Signed Susan Bransfield, first select. There's extra copies up here if anyone would like. Okay. Oh, the new calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand. We'll speak with David on that. Hi Jen. So, we'll open it up.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for comments. Sarah, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, Sarah Starey Rutter, thirty-two East Main Street. I have a question in regards to how does this pertain to the owner, as you say here, the owner of a home, and their dog in that off a leash on their own property?
And Jim, you were gonna answer that.
And if it is off a leash, and somebody complains that they're off a leash, can it be given a ticket for nuisance?
On your own land?
The last part I couldn't answer, but I think the intent of the last section was to say that it's unlawful for somebody to let their dog roam uninvited on your property if they don't own it, right? So that puts that exclusion there. If it's your property, it's not unlawful for you to let your dog roam on it. Or if you're at somebody's house and you're invited, it wouldn't be unlawful per this for, right, the way I read this.
But it doesn't say off a leash. Can my dog be in my front yard off the leash and on my property?
I think, stating to roam.
Playing electrical fences, so what are you gonna do with someone with an electrical fence?
Well, we're just asking because that's how our dog was barking in our front yard and we were given a nuisance ticket.
For what?
So we wanna try to clarify how this is stated. Because downtown, it is very easy for, because the houses are so close beside us.
Well, roam, it shall be unlawful and an infraction of this chapter for any person within the town of Portland to allow any animal to roam. Roam, that means no leash. Uninvited on private property owned by someone other than the owner of the animal. So that means, in my estimation, the owner of the animal would be allowed to have a roaming animal on their own land.
Right.
And that means if somebody were coming by with their dog.
They're uninvited. They're uninvited.
And their dog barking, walking on the sidewalk, we would not be given a nuisance ticket.
If you're on your land.
So you mean you got dueling dogs, barking, one yours from your yard and that other one from the sidewalk?
Correct. And that's how they talk us. That's how they communicate.
Because the old law said for a prolonged period of time. For, the old law says a nuisance is a dog barking for a prolonged period of time that annoys the neighbor, sick or disabled, is the way the old law ran, wrote.
No, no, not for town. That was the state law.
This one just says, Mr. Starey, Starey Rutter, Mr. Rutter. It just says, "No owner of any animal shall allow such animal to create a nuisance."
That's correct.
And this is for the town, so how will this also run injunction? Because when we're given our ticket, they didn't use our town one, they went straight to the state.
And that's where I got my ticket.
And the state ordinance is different than this.
Right. Because we don't write state law.
Did your ticket get thrown out?
Oh, yes.
Good.
But it still cost us and it doesn't, you know what I mean? And I wouldn't want anybody to have the question, because we're doing this to hopefully avoid these.
Well, I will share this, of course, with the police department and the ACO has looked at this already, but should this get adopted, we would talk with the ACO, Animal Control Officer, and the police department so they understood what this ordinance said.
And they wouldn't be able to refer to the state to give somebody a ticket using a state law.
I think they still can, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're, I know what you're saying, you're kinda talking about a different case than kind of what we're covering. I mean, you're talking about a nuisance, you're talking about a nuisance, like, as opposed to roaming. Well, nuisance.
The town of Portland has a roaming and nuisance. We have, and then the state. So, in our case, the Animal Control Officer gave us a roaming and nuisance violation. They took away the roaming and kept the nuisance. But the nuisance wasn't listed here. The nuisance pertained to a state.
Code.
Code. So it's, there's, again, there's a little, there's a lot of gray area and there's a lot of confusion between what is, what a town person's gonna be held to, town ordinance or state ordinance?
State law, state law.
State law.
Only towns make up ordinances.
And it gets a little confusing, especially when it comes to the safety of the public, safety of people on their own property.
Well, even reading the first sentence, it says, "No owner of any animal shall allow such an animal to create a nuisance or roam at large." So it's like two different, so it sounds like the case you're talking about if you got a ticket on your properties because that was construed as create a nuisance. Not the roaming part, but the creating a nuisance part.
Yeah. Because I got the roaming taken apart away because it wasn't my property, but they were saying because my dogs were barking for a prolonged period of time where they attacked the dog, they gave us a state ticket. Like, they could pick and choose which one they wanted to go with, but again.
But this would still allow, if there was a nuisance dog, they could.
On my property, then they could get a violation.
This deals, the changes deal with the roaming piece.
Correct.
So, which is good because it's difficult downtown where people walk their dogs and they're constantly roaming people's yards.
Yes. So I think this does address that.
Yes.
And that person would be in violation of the ordinance. Should they be roaming, should they allow a dog, right, to roam on someone's property?
You had originally mentioned that you might want the language in here in regards to curbing dogs.
Yeah, but that I did not do. I stuck with just the roaming piece for this time. That, I think, Sarah, is in another ordinance. The curbing of a dog? I believe that's in another piece of the ordinance. This one was dealing with dogs going on other people's property uninvited.
So this doesn't take care of five dogs next door barking at me when I start to bark?
Well, if you consider that a nuisance, what I know in the past neighbors have done is they record the day and the time of the barking and they keep a log. And then they share that with the Animal Control Officer, who then makes the determination that this dog is or is not creating a nuisance based on that log. And in the past, I know of at least one instance where a ticket was issued because a dog was barking with such frequency from the log. They went to court to object to that ticket and it was nolied.
Yeah, but that's one of our problems. If you, if somebody, we're so close, my neighbor's house is eight feet off my property line, where she starts up her car, so my dogs are outside, they're going to bark. And this, and this is what I'm saying, if you, whether it's nolied or not, but you give somebody a ticket like that because they're barking at somebody, start in their car or something, you're forcing them to take a day off or to go to court, whether the ticket's gonna get thrown out or not.
But one thing that does happen is if the court made that decision to nolie that type of an incident, the police department knows that and they would not be as inclined to repeat that kind of a ticket because we go to the same court all the time and that prosecutor or judge, whoever the court official.
It seemed like they would give out a couple because I had to go to court twice over it and if they nolied.
Yeah, did you get two tickets?
I had to take two days off order to go to court for the same thing. Because they didn't like what I said the first day and had me come back the second day.
But there's, I know that, I'm just going from what, when I've had the police comment on other matters, not animal control matters, but other matters. They'll say, "Well, while it may be a violation, it's something that's going to get nolied." So we are very careful that we are judicious and we follow what the court's recommendations are. I mean, that, that's a big part, of course, of law enforcement, is making sure that the whole system is working together.
So when you got that ticket, was that the only ticket or was it a part of another event that occurred?
Well, there were, there were three, two events at my house that happened within six months. And one was with the blue pit bull that attacked a couple other dogs, then a couple other people. So they based my ticket off, they based my dog being a nuisance and off of that dog fight that happened in my yard also.
All was due to roaming, after those dogs coming into our yard.
So that, the ticket was based off of that incident happened six months prior to that. And then they gave me a ticket for this one because then they said my dog was vicious, was one of the parts of the tickets, and roaming, the nuisance part, was with, the nuisance was vicious and nuisance and roaming. And then I went to the police department and said, "How can my dog be roaming if they're on my property?" And we had a couple meetings, so then they took the roaming apart and then they kept the nuisance. And then I went back and I says, "Excuse me, if you took the roaming part off, then my dog cannot be a nuisance because it's on my property. And if my dog chooses to bark at another dog walking by, then it can't be a nuisance." And they still issued me the ticket and said, "You'll have to go to court over it." And I went to court for two days over it when a dog, when my dog was on my property and barking at a dog, which, like I said, we just said, well, they would say, "Well, it's on your property." Well, they still chose to give me the ticket and I spent two days in a courtroom and six hundred dollars of pay taken away from me.
And the barking was less than three minutes.
Do you think, Sarah, that this is an answer to the roaming piece?
Yes, it is.
I think so.
So you're in support of this language at this point, at least?
Yes. And I, and I think, I think it has to get out from whether it be the notices because so many people in the downtown area are seriously affected by disrespectful people walking their dogs. And it's not just, just them walking the dogs, it's the defecation. Because even after our incident, we had people that actually put feces in our yard, planted feces in our yard.
About to pull off my front step.
But, because if they, if they're not charged, eight feet is the length of the leash, plus two feet of an arm, you're at ten feet. Ten feet, you're at my front steps.
I'll tell you another area that, that I'm getting a lot of complaints about is the reservoir.
Everybody takes their dogs up there.
But they're off leash.
And they, yep, they're off leash and then, and they also don't pick up after themselves. Because they take all its town property, nobody's gonna check.
They're roaming though.
Yep, no, exactly. But again, the police don't take notice.
Have to enforce.
And I'm not saying that they don't, it's, it, but maybe they need to be a little more diligent because I understand that people are also going up there kayaking.
There should be a place that we can take our dogs to run free. And like I said, either, you know, you have, they have dog parks in a lot of other towns. Maybe the reservoir is a place.
Do you want a dog, do you want a dog park?
I don't want a dog park.
You don't want a dog park?
Well, I, I would love a dog park. You know, I would, I wouldn't take my dog to the dog park, but, you know.
But you think for other people, it might be?
Yeah.
Some people might love a dog park because they do, they live in a confined area and want a way for their dogs to be able to run.
Right.
Where I live in Maryland, there's a whole bunch of parks. And they have dog stations with trash bags.
Oh, yeah?
And little, little doggy bags that you pull the bags off. And they're in every park that people walk their dogs. And then they have some dog parks that are just a vast scenario where people can go in and let their dogs run. Dogs need to run. I mean, that's one of the reasons why you have the dog fights because they're not, the same problem we're having with kids. Kids don't get out of house to get all worked up because they ain't burning off enough energy. Dogs are the same way. If you don't burn off the energy, the energy's gonna come out.
Yeah, selectmen can be like that too.
I think she's referring to me, she's right.
No.
You gotta enough kids to burn off enough energy.
That's right.
What I was gonna say is, we're fortunate in Portland, there's a lot of open space already, I don't know. I don't know where it's, but regardless, you can use a leash, we have the state force, I think you're allowed to walk out there. We, so, I, I'm not sure.
You're supposed to leash your dog.
Yeah, but.
According to the rules.
Long leash out there, or would this rule still apply to the eight feet in the state force?
That's what I'm saying, in the state park.
It's within the town of Portland.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, even though it's not owned by the town, it's in the town of Portland.
Well, here's a perfect example. There is a woman, and we all basically know who she is, who walks a dog, and eight feet, twelve feet, she sprayed a twelve-year-old kid with mace because she got anxious. So, there's gotta be something done because that's just not appropriate. And you put in here, "A person responsible and capable." That, to me, is not a person that's responsible and capable if they're that afraid and they're going to spray a twelve-year-old with mace.
Was it a big twelve-year-old?
No, it was a little twelve-year-old with little fingers. Sorry.
Do you know, and I, I mean, and I, and I need to sound like a dead horse, I want to my finger at this one individual and there's many of them, but that is consistently happening in the downtown area and it's just, it's, it is, it itself is a nuisance.
People need to be in control of their dogs with the leash, pick up after them, and not be on, uninvited on private property. And that's what this is saying.
And if they're afraid to walk that dog, then they shouldn't be walking that dog because other people have a right to walk their dog.
Sure.
And, and if they're that way, there's two sides to the street. If you're walking on this, you see something coming, the dog, then walk to the other side. But don't resort to mace because you say another dog coming, you're like, wait a minute, that's, that's not appropriate.
Who's, she's walking her dog and she's spraying another person walking their dog?
The incident was down at the waterfront and the one dog was off a leash, but it was a puppy.
Okay.
And it ran up to her dog, which is the dog that's been attacking other dogs. So, instead of, instead of just trying to pull the dog back and tell the puppy to sit down or something, then she just sprayed, the little girl was grabbing her dog and wound up spraying her and her dog with mace.
Ouch.
Ow.
She got the twelve-year-old in the face.
Wow. Ouch.
Not appropriate. Not appropriate.
So.
But I think this will take care of the roaming issue, so that's good feedback. Any other comments tonight, Shirley or Jan?
There's a one who walks, she lives in the neighborhood, she has a police dog, big, well, German Shepherd.
Big German Shepherd, right?
Big German Shepherd. And she takes it out and she walks it. And you're walking down Main Street and she's on the same side of the street from you. She steps off the side of the block with the dog.
She could give a class in how to walk a dog. She does a great job.
Yes.
She does a very nice job.
Yes, because she came on East Main Street, I see her all the time, she does.
Very, very good walker, yeah.
His name is Romeo, by the way.
I was just wanting to hear, I heard some of your issues before, and it's kind of very serious with dogs. I don't know, sometimes I worry about statues that are hard to figure, kind of, not help the problem, you know, I think this makes sense downtown. You know, I had a dog that was practically terrible.
Yes. He was a wonderful dog.
Better than some people with the leash with a long tail. So, and I had dogs also, I haven't been so good one yet, but, you know, it's, it's like people too, some of them are, are good and some aren't.
Oh, I don't know about that, Jen.
So, you know.
But you can have dogs that are friendly with, with a hundred other dogs. Then one dog come up and they're not so friendly.
But again, it's not just a friendly thing because when people are walking their dogs and they let them roam, dogs, they have to go to the bathroom somewhere. And sometimes it's not even just a defecation because the urine does more damage to somebody's yard than anything else. It ruins the lawn, it ruins the agriculture that you're growing.
It's true.
And you wanna have a nice yard and you plant, you plant the shrubbery and it's getting ruined from the, and that's not appropriate either. Now, I don't walk into somebody's house and pee on their carpet and pee on their sofa and say, "Oh, well, sorry, I'm roaming." And we all laugh, but isn't that the truth?
No, I get your analogy.
Our lawn is an extension of our homes.
Right.
You wanna have people over, you wanna have.
Of course.
It, it's extension of your property. We pay taxes, my house is immaculate, my lawn is immaculate, and I don't appreciate people not respecting that.
Good point. But this will take care of it, at least if you can identify.
One of the dogs next door in relation to his barking, he finds, goes out onto a piece of the kitchen that is a porch area and the blinds are open, are open, he barks at me and I'm in my own house.
Don't you think he's saying hello?
No. I'm afraid of him. I'm afraid of him.
Really?
Just a little while ago, there was five of them out in the back, their backyard barking.
Five dogs?
And the cat was flying from one end of the house to the other to hide under the bed.
Five dogs?
Cats and dogs.
Must have been grand dogs, right?
No.
No.
But sometimes where there's more than one dog, they're bouncing off each other's noise. So they're asking, "Me first, me first, me first."
You don't walk into my house and argue, "I'm attacking my two dogs."
I'm not defending, I have two dogs, but that's what the United Society taught us. That's what happens with our dogs. Each one is saying, "Me, me." Then you say, "Well," and they look at you like, "Oh, goodbye." And they walk down the hall like you were nothing, but you were like, "What happened?" Because it's really, and, and they're really calling out for attention, so they're like excited children.
Of course.
Except they go flying over to the fence on the opposite side and bark at the dogs in that yard.
Yeah.
Yep.
Dogs are.
Do we have a change of our name of our street? Barkers.
Any other comments on this particular ordinance tonight? Thank you for your feedback. We're gonna bring it up at our seven-thirty meeting and the selectmen will have the opportunity to adopt this as far as the changes are concerned. If there's no further comment, Sharon will close the public hearing at six fifty-two. Thank you. And we'll wait till seven to start our workshop.
I think the roads in the state force, we still own.
Oh, yeah?
Not much.
We don't plow them though, do we, Ben?
No, they are unimproved.
I did have a topic.
Doesn't have a, oh.
One will box will be.
Watch out.
Another one will be.
I know, it's bigger than I.
I know.
That's good.
All right, we're gonna call the workshop to order. A couple of our selectmen will be right with us in a minute. And I will let you know that we have some handouts.
Wait, this is a regular meeting?
The handouts are the monthly budget report, which you should have at your stations. In addition, Tom Robinson, working today since last night, did come up with a, an analysis of diesel and gas usage. And the handout shows within this chart, highway, the water department, fire marshal, the sewer department, vehicle maintenance, building, I'm just going down the left column here, grounds department, fire, police, public works, senior center, animal control, parks and recreation, the transfer station, the building official, and the technology department. So if you look at each column at the head, you'll see usage for fiscal year seventeen in terms of gallonage, sixteen for each of these various departments, the usage for FY sixteen and FY fifteen, the combined three-year usage, the average usage, the estimate of the cost per gallon at three dollars per gallon, which would be, let's just take highway for an example, forty-nine, six ninety-eight. Highway gas, sixteen thousand, five hundred seventeen, for a total of sixty-six thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. If you estimate at two dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon, it would be sixty thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and eight cents. If it was two fifty per gallon, it would be fifty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventeen cents. If it was two twenty-five per gallon, it would be a total of forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. We budgeted in your books fifty thousand dollars, which is a budgeted price per gallon at two point two seven, based on the average for those fiscal years of fifteen through seventeen. And if you go down to the next water department, that estimate was slightly high and the recommendation would be, that could be reduced within the water division to forty-five hundred from six thousand, and update that price at two dollars and forty cents. The next department, fire marshal, there's an analysis showing that that is somewhat reasonable for the amount of gas that's utilized. For the sewer division, it looks like two dollars and thirty-one cents, which is a reasonable Vehicle maintenance, we have a note, the card had been lost, restarted late seventeen and FY eighteen. So we don't have a good estimate there, Tom?
Not really.
Not really. Within the building maintenance division, we guesstimated at two dollars and twenty cents, which looks like a reasonable to low estimate. We looked at grounds division, two dollars and forty-three cents, unbalanced, reasonable is the determination. Let's look at the fire department, diesel and gas. That estimate is slightly high. The recommendation would be to lower that number to seven thousand dollars and the potential price would be two point five four, savings of seventeen fifty. Police, forty thousand dollars, and that's estimated at two dollars and sixty-six cents. It appears reasonable as we expect the mileage to be closer to what was experienced in FY fifteen due to staffing changes over the other fiscal years. Let's see. Public works gas is guesstimated at two point two two, which seems to be reasonable to low. Senior center gas, three dollars and seventeen cents, not based on price per gallon, budget if for driving elderly. Can you explain that, please?
It's supposed to be kids. The budget for driving others with people around, so it's just, I mean, you gotta have gas to drive people around.
Do they go slower?
No, we have a large plus.
Okay.
It's just, who knows how many trips you're driving, so the whole budget is salary and gas. But, you know, it's just the number of passengers.
That's salary and gas, Tom?
No, I think he was referring to the whole budget and.
For that line.
For that part.
Reasonable, ages me elderly, the whole budget is ages me elderly is salary and gas.
Right.
Yeah.
Animal control, four eighty-two, the van is in poor condition. Differential, you could save two hundred seventy-five dollars. She doesn't use that van a whole lot, I guess. Right, Tom? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, he's saying the savings is immaterial, I think.
Yeah, but it's up to the board if they wanna adjust that. Too high for the park and rec gas, that should be reduced. Slightly high for the transfer station, there's some savings to be experienced there. Building official gas appears to be reasonable, as does the technology department.
Do we pay the state taxes on fuel for the town vehicles?
For certain factors, you're not sure. I said that.
You pay, I think it's the excise tax?
Okay. So what's a typical amount that we pay for, per gallon, for, say, gasoline? Like, today at the pump, it was two fifty-five in town for average, you know, for the population. What would you say the last time you bought fuel for? And I mean, I guess, back.
Or, if I may, or do we have a contract price?
Or do we have a contract price? Like, do we have some tanks that we fill up and then?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I don't know, do we have a contract? How's that work? Could you walk us through purchasing of fuel for the year? Is that kinda what you're trying to figure out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, right, if I understood you last night, you're not on a fixed price right now.
So for fiscal year '18...
Which is what we're in now.
Which doesn't have much relevance to what we're doing here. But fiscal year '18, we have two contracts, one with East River Energy, which is a locked contract with a strong price. I want to say, again, I'd note those at maybe $1.70. We had a great price with diesel, maybe it was $1.986, maybe? So those were locked in, wonderful prices. Like I said, fiscal year '18, wonderful price. Fiscal year '17, wonderful price. We've gone out, run the bids on the two components, and neither price came in at that. When we went out to bid on the gas and the oil and diesel, oil's a kind of an immaterial expense in globality. We spent about five, paid about seventy-five hundred gallons of oil. So that doesn't, not come into play. The big players, obviously, are diesel and gasoline and natural gas. But diesel came in roughly around $2.20, so we didn't lock, we went and float. So, so about $2.12 to $2.20. So if you float, you don't know what's going to occur. So if we, if it goes back down to one something, we will win and we'll lock in, and things will be good. And that's a good thing, there'll be a plus to fund balance. If we hold out and something bad happens, and the price jumps to three or $2.70, you're going to lose, and then there's a deficit for fiscal year seven, for eighteen, for nineteen.
Nineteen.
So eighteen, you're locked in, you've got good pricing, super duper. So when we do, we, the gas, so much of the thing, the price didn't come in, is good on a lock at that point. So we're watching that, and that's a float. So that's around, right now is about $2.05, two, around that area, if you were to buy it. Plus, and that, plus, yeah, with, that would be with, like, a fixed. So again, if you, you know, so we're, like, we look at the sheet there, you're pretty much somewhere between $2.20 and $2.50 blended. And for budgetary purposes, you know, that, to me, that feels like it's a strong number. The question was, we don't go through, you know, we don't ever go through an analysis of the detail that will be created here for you all to come up with a budget number. You kind of blend off the prior years, and you use what's your best estimate and your best judgment. And as you can tell, the judgment that we've utilized, and the majority of those items are quite on for all the material numbers. Police, highway, you know, those are your big boys, and that's, you know, those numbers are good. So, you know, I feel that, I feel confident that your gas and diesel numbers are adequate right now. If we were to go, you know, if we wait, and it goes the wrong way, on highway, you could, you could lose a little bit there, because that's around $2.27. But, you know, you know, we hope, we've talked to the vendors, and we're hoping that it will go back down somewhat, and that we can hopefully, you know, come in with a better number and a good number, like we did this year.
When do you typically lock in?
We try to lock in when we, when, you know, they tell us it's the right time to lock in.
Right, but I mean, so you're working on fiscal 2019, we're heading toward the summer driving season. Would seem like April, May might be the best time to lock in, or wait till September, October, because it typically, gas and gasoline usually goes up in the summer.
But generally, when they look at it, they're looking at the future market.
Okay.
So you kind of got to play, go with them on that. And like I said, we're looking, I'm, we're talking with Dime almost weekly now, and the last one we got was diesel was about, it was about $2.12, $2.50, and that was down five cents from the week before. So we're about $2.20, like I said.
You mentioned there was a window to lock in after the fact yesterday in the meeting, or did I misunderstand you?
Yeah, I'm not sure. You can, you know, there, it's, it's, the only thing that's different with a lock is, so, so say you're on the differential, and you're floating on, so they take the NYMEX average or whatever, and, so they'll give you, depending on what you're doing, you know, they give you maybe a negative .04, .01, or something like that, as a diff. When you get to the point where you're going to lock, there's usually, there's usually the agreed upon amount. Like, in this one, it's about, like, in diesel, it's a .0127 markup. So it's a, you know, there's a markup lock. So when you go in, it goes up by, by some factor.
Okay.
And then it, so you take that price and you go up. So that's kind of the difference there, and then you have the ability to lock. So with the CROG bid, what we used with the diesel, they gave you, like, they gave you, like, a window to lock on that bid, but when we, when we talked with our vendor, they were, they wrote the contract to be able to say, "Here you are in the diff. When you choose to lock, we will lock at this differential, the same differential that was in the bid." So we got the ability to lock after the date of the, of the lock that was in the agreement with CROG. So, so we're floating on the, floating at this point, waiting hopefully for the pricing to go down.
What's, what's the reasoning for such a large variation in numbers on the sheet per gallon?
Again, I said before, I mean, it was like I said, I thought I was using around $3-ish, and, you know, and then, as I, as, that's what we had started with last year, and it kind of went down from there, and it keeps going down, and as I, as I feel I can take money out, I try to take it out for you, because I know people don't want to have, because that's the money in the budget, so I'm like, okay, this number is good to me. So I'm not doing, like, you know, I'm not saying, okay, here it is, and plus, you know, this, in this instance, I took a blended average for you, and just came up with a rate structure, just to see, so you could see what it looked like.
What I meant is, I believe we fill up all these, all these vehicles but a few at the highway garage, correct? And it's all based on the same purchasing power. Why don't I see a uniform gasoline number? And I don't mind what number you pick, I respect that and I appreciate that, you're, you're protecting us, but why isn't it a uniform $3? Then it makes sense.
Back in the day, it used to be, and then as it, you know, as time went on, you know, it just morphs.
If I could to.
Please.
When you're budgeting, you don't want to budget to the exact number for everything, because there are so many variables that occur over the course of a year. So when we're budgeting, I would think that when you have a variety of numbers here, you might be too low in some of these, these, these rows, and others are going to be too high, but on balance, because we haven't locked yet, you're, you're budgeting with a, with a better estimate then. So, in other words, you may be wrong in highway, but you may be right in the police, or you may be wrong in the police, and you're going to be right in highway. So we're trying our best to predict on March 1st, and Tom probably prepared this in February, for the numbers that we are going to experience starting July 1 through June 30. So when you're budgeting, if you budget to an exact number, you could run into difficulty, particularly in this case, when we don't know where that number's going to come in, and you're not going to know likely by April 11th the locked number that we have. Now, if we go in the office tomorrow and, miracle miracles, you get a low number and we lock, then we'll come back and we know what that...
But even so, I mean, again, the usage is a variable. I mean, look at, just look at the highway.
Usages.
I mean, you got fifteen thousand one year, fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand. It all depends on how many storms you have, how many, how much, how many trips you're going out. I mean, it just, it floats around, and what projects you're running.
And if you use more, but you've got enough money to kind of hit that mark the best you can, then you're better off.
And certainly, they just, they're, they're all over the board. I mean, there's no exact science to that number.
In some years, we use less gas, and some years we use more.
You just don't want to have not enough. Because, I mean, you can't not, you know, plow the road, because, yeah, you can't tell the police officer, "By the way, you can't go out today, you'll walk around the street," you know?
Just, just to feed off of what Ben said, so I get the usage, the gases, the gases what it is, but it shouldn't affect the cost per gallon that dramatically. I guess that's the question. Do I understand?
I don't understand, I don't understand that question. I mean, I, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I did not do, I just did this for you today. So how, how would I have known what I was using for a percentage? I was basing it off of past experience and what I thought would occur. So what I'm saying, so then that was questioned, so I did an analysis that proves within reason you're somewhere in that $2.25 to about $2.60 range, which is a reasonable, to my opinion, is a reasonable estimate for gas and diesel usage in the town of Portland.
When did we lock in last year? Sorry.
I don't have that information.
I'd like to know that. Not tonight, obviously.
Why do you want to know?
Why would I?
Because I don't know that I have it in my notebook.
I'd actually like to know the past, I don't know, Rick might agree with me, I'd like to know when we locked in the past five years. I don't think that's unreasonable to wonder when we locked in and what the pattern is. I think there's a value to that, and I would be more educated making my decision about a big number here.
I thought you meant the exact day. It's typically...
Oh, no, that's what I'm getting at.
Typically.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, you know, it depends on the year, of course, some years it's doing well.
We floated the whole year.
And then if you, if we have a bad year and we spend more, we use more gallons, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, years when you have great pricing, like, you know, even in the dollars, you kind of lock, as soon as you know you're in the dollars.
Well, I think the, I think what Mike and Ben are getting at is that we're, we're just trying to get a, an idea of what, what, you gave us the gallon usage, that's, that's good, that's plain, we can see that, you know, the three-year average, that's very reasonable. I think, I think what we're asking is, well, what's a, maybe a reasonable number price per gallon to sort of estimate this at? And you seem to be coming into this $2.50 range with your adjustments, which...
Which is either reasonable or low.
Well, based on where you are today, that's not too bad, because you said gas is...
We were $1.68, now it's up to $2. I mean, it's, that's quite a bit different.
Right, but how long ago were you at $1.68?
For the whole fiscal year.
Because you locked, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're on the open market now, and you say it's running, gas is running around $2.05, and...
You know we're not buying it now at these numbers.
Okay, are you using what you have in your reserve?
From July 1 of 2017 to June 30 of 2018, still to happen, for that fiscal year, we're paying the $1.87.
I think, I think, I think gas is $1.69, and I think diesel may be like $1.87.
Okay, because you're locked in.
And as we're investigating where we're going to lock, I said to Tom, because he came in with a number of over $2.50, I don't remember what exactly the number was, I said, "That's too high compared to what we locked in last year. Let's see if we can wait a little longer and keep looking." Because it is, that was March, I don't know, March 1st, March, March 1st is when we put these numbers in.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, late February probably is when you...
So late February, I said, "That's too high, I'm not going to lock for July 1 in February."
And it has been drifting down. Now, who knows if it's going to continue?
So we're not saying we're paying these numbers now, this is the average at which we budgeted for your book. We hope that number will be closer, I don't know if it's going to be as close as what we had last year, because I think that was, that was an excellent price, we'll pay you now. When we say last year, we mean right now.
Yeah, okay, now...
That's what's throwing you off.
Yeah.
The fiscal year that we're in now is this budget. What we're trying to figure out in my three-ring binder budget is what we're going to have July 1, but we figure that out in February. So what we're trying to tell you is, we're estimating for your budgetary purposes, these num, using these numbers, and some of them are reasonable, maybe, some of them are a little high, some of them are a little low. But we're trying to say to you, this is an estimate for what you should expect to have in your accounts starting July 1.
But I think some of us are saying it might still be a little high, because if you were to lock today, you would get diesel, I think you said, you could lock diesel at $2.20, if I understood you right. You said if you went out to bid this year to range right now, it's $2.12 to $2.20 on diesel.
Really, you're not going to budget that. I mean, you budget to, to, to a, to a concern, you have to be conservative in your budgeting. So if you, if you're hoping to get $2.20, you budget probably $2.50. If you're hoping to get $2.50, you budget $3. Because if you don't get it, you got a big problem going the other way. You'd much prefer to have the other, where you're over budget, you know, to extend.
I mean, the other thing is that, I mean, ultimately, what really drives us is the highway and police. I mean, we could sit here and talk about these numbers, but those are two-thirds of the numbers. I mean, when you look at it, it's about 100, I mean, very rough, I came up like about $1.45 is your total, what you're talking about, and we, your changes are like $3,300, so we're, you know, it's really probably his estimate for police and, and, and highway is really what drives how close we are, because the other numbers are so small that, well...
And that's where, those ones, you know, they feel comfortable. I mean, again, the $2.66, I believe you will find, based on the transition in officers, you will have more mileage. I mean, you should have in this year, all of your officers on the road. That's been a three-year window where that's occurred.
Where's the Board of Ed gallons for diesel?
The question was the town.
What's that?
The question was asked about the town.
They probably use quite a bit of diesel for all those buses, right?
Yeah, they do. Sure. They're all part of our, they're part of our bidding and contract, I think.
Right, because what I'm getting at is that gives you the buying power also, you get to use those gallons, those estimates, correct?
Oh, sure, helps.
So it's a big number. We're not just talking about what's in front of us. You now also have to think about, and I'm curious, what did they budget for? Who came up with their gallon? If it wasn't you, who came up with their, and I'm curious what they used for a number? I guess that's one of my questions I'm going to need an answer for. What did the Board of Education use for a per gallon price for diesel?
Isn't it, shouldn't it be in their budget? I mean, no?
The bottom line will be, but not...
Right, not a per gallon.
Well, Tom, I, I appreciate the spreadsheet.
Thank you.
It, it helps clarify it a little, and...
I only have one last question.
I was just going to say, I think, I think $2.50 is, you know, reasonable, given where the market is now, and based on what you locked in last year. I mean, I think your potent, your updated column is more to my liking, I guess.
So are you proposing a change, Rick, based on the information? Would you like to?
I mean, water's not going to affect anything for what you're doing in the general fund.
Yep, but, okay, so not...
Really, the only material transaction there would be fire, if anything, and that's not really material, but that's...
Just my curiosity, for that one card that was lost, I'm assuming they couldn't get fuel out of that setup we have without a card? Didn't we use another card?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, and I didn't expect...
That's Dale, I mean, I would assume he has control over, you know, he must be using a highway card or something.
Okay, so, yeah, so I just wanted to know where...
Rick is answering you.
Oh, he's there.
It's likely he has a higher, or persistent, I believe what happened was, he also plows the, and was charged the highway, and I believe you'll find that fuel that was being charged, was charged the highway route of the vehicle.
We're paying for it one way or another. I was just curious how they got the fuel after the last...
And there's not a lot of fuel used in the vehicle.
And that would be a tough one to keep track of, they, they do so many different, you know? I just wanted to make sure, we weren't getting fuel out without a card?
No, that would have been a third of the...
Okay.
Okay, if you want to just set aside that handout, the other handout before you leave, Tom? If there's questions? Has to do with some questions we had on streetlights. And so we polled for you dated 3/5/2018, the payment that would have been for the statement dated March 1. And if you take a look at the various pages, you will see traffic signals, what, what we pay for that, the amount due.
Susan, who are the two signatures on the second page? Are they both the same?
Department, I didn't have the finance card.
Okay. I didn't know if we deliberately had two signatures for a reason, or...
Yeah, well, it was really Department at the time. Not the Department, I don't know if it was really... Not the Department, I don't know.
So, I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at the handout. And you'll see it identifies whether it's an LED or a Lumen HP sodium.
Are these all for traffic lights?
No.
Oh, okay.
These would be for traffic lights and streetlights, correct, Tom?
Yes.
How long is our contract with Constellation good for?
I think it was a three-year.
Oh, yeah, multi-year, okay.
Yeah. We're well into it, I would say, because we... Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend five.
I don't think it's that long, but we'll, we'll double check. I don't know.
And these guys are tough if you want to change.
Quite the savings between the sodium and the LED, huh?
Depends on how many, too, right?
Well...
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Number of lamps, it shows you the number of lamps for each of the various...
So, you're warming $14 in a month, then you go over here, LED, 13 of them, 65 a month.
The LED is about a third of the cost.
Almost half.
Save 60, save 66 percent.
Yeah, 15 lamps at $137, and you have 166, right? 160, 15 sodiums, $17, is that right?
Well, on one, one comparison, there's a 50,000, 50,000 Lumen HP sodium, one lamp is $14.
Yeah.
And then on the next page, there's a 13,000 LED, 13 lamps, there's $65. That's $5 a lamp versus $14 a lamp.
But then we got some cheap sodiums, we got 23 of them coming in at $80 a lamp.
You might have different wattage.
Yeah, they're 9,500s.
Yeah, they're smaller. That's, that's quite a bit smaller lamp. We didn't ask that question last night.
Hey, Tom? Tom? Question, on the budget forms for our street lighting, they talk about changing everything over to LED lights. When did we change everything over to LED lights?
It's at least a year, a year and a half ago, I think, we ordered it, and by the time they got around to doing it, maybe it's about a year, Rick?
Yeah.
Yeah, and obviously some, they still haven't done.
Okay, so there's still some that's got to be done?
Yeah. I, I don't know why they're not done. They told me they would be doing all of our lamps. It could just be we're not on the schedule yet, but I will ask.
There's some of the same, so we got...
Why? Was there, did they tell you something?
I have the same recollection last night. I mean, well, they had reached all of our...
No, from what I recall, you're, both sides are right. They weren't going to switch theirs. They were only going to switch ours, like on the 66 corridor, for example.
Well, the number of our lights are state, state has many streetlights, but there was, we have ones that we are, I don't know. It would be nice if they...
And my other question, I'll wait for...
The plan, the plan was, and I signed, that they would replace us. I will double check and see, maybe that, maybe we didn't have the full listing, so we'll go back and check.
We can corroborate that.
They did a tremendous amount.
I'm pretty sure he said that last night.
And you'll have to educate me, and maybe you, maybe you won't know, and we'll just find out. A lot of these LEDs are 4100s, and a lot of these LEDs are 8500s. Were the 8500s the ones that they put in and then took out and then brought them back down to 4500s? And if they did, we shouldn't be paying on, based on the 8500, or maybe it's just a clar, you know, see what I'm getting at? Or is there certain ones that are 8500s and certain ones that are 4500s?
I know they did some on Route 66.
Yeah.
And those were done as an experiment.
Yeah.
Remember that? And we liked them because they were bright on Route 66.
Okay.
I don't think they went back and changed those, but what they told me was, going forward, if the town chose to replace all of our other street lamps with LEDs, they would use the lower wattage because that's healthier for neighborhoods. And I said, "I want the lower wattage, that sounds good," and I signed off on it.
Okay.
So, I do not think they changed back the ones that were the experimental that they did on Route 66.
And could we just find out the difference? Because there's quite, I mean, there's 70 of them between two bills here, so I'm just here...
Sure.
I would just want to know what we actually have out there and make sure that we're being built for what we have and not what they switched. So, for example, if they switched out...
I don't know, I don't remember...
They did switch some. I remember you saying that back...
I know that, I will ask, but I know that the new ones, they definitely said they were, they had switched the kind of lamp they were using, but I, I will verify, because that's now maybe two or three years ago.
I saw them physically taking down LEDs and swapping LEDs.
Okay, I will ask.
That, that's what I recall.
Sure.
Because I was wondering what they were doing with the old LEDs.
Yep. The one thing that we can do, and it's somewhat time-consuming, is you can monitor all your electric usage for all of the accounts that you have, and then you have the companies that do the energy saving programs, and they say, "Well, we can do this, 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 and this for you." And then you say, "Okay, let's go do it." Then they come back and you look again at what your savings is, but it, it's something I want to do, but I can tell you, I haven't had the time to sit and do it, but it is something that is something I want. The, you know, when we talk about that sustainability CT that we signed on to, that's something that maybe we could find someone to assist us to do that. We tried to use Eastern Connecticut State University a couple of years ago. That plan didn't work. I mean, there, there's a lot of things you can do with energy if you have the staff to spend the time analyzing it and doing it. So, you know, we get the directive and we're able to say that we're able to do this, we can move ahead, but that's something I think we need to talk some more about, if we put it that way. Because we have, this is just streetlights. And then multiply that by all the other electrical things that we have.
What is very...
You know, so it, it's a laudable goal, if we put it that way, and we'll work on it.
Yeah.
The last thing that I do have in relation to this, and I'll pass it both, both down this way and this way. We did have work done in 2015 by Lantern Energy, which is owned by a gentleman that lives in Portland, it's based in Norwich, and they did energy improvements at Town Hall within the Sewer Department and the Senior Center. They also, and I don't have these, they also did work at the schools. I know they did the high school for sure, and I'm not sure if they did the other schools, but these were something that the former Board of Selectmen wanted us to do, to move ahead with energy improvements of a modest nature. They didn't want us, remember I told you that we had the opportunity, if we wanted to do a big project, and the Selectmen thought, "Let's try small first," so we just went with changing out the lighting in these buildings. And this shows you some of the paperwork associated with the changes that they did in the lighting. That was in 2015. So, I'll send the Sewer Department that way, Town Hall, and the Senior Center. So, that kind of brings us up to date on fuel and electricity. I don't know that we had any other opportunities for anything else. I also answered a lot of questions that Elizabeth Regan had in terms of the numbers, and Tom and I are continuing to work on those, and we'll get those to you before April 11, which is when we want to meet and adopt the budget. Yes?
Tom, did, did you say, I think you said this last night, the increase in our electricity in the budget was partially, or had significant amount of that, was because of distribution cost increases? That's, that's most of it?
Because the usage is in the contract, right?
And your, and your rate is, your rate is fixed?
But Eversource's distribution is what changes.
Right, and we don't have control on that.
PURA does.
Pardon?
I think it's PURA, they have the regulation. If you'd like, we can start our regularly scheduled meeting if you're ready. So, is there a motion to adjourn the budget deliberations?
Just one second.
Sure.
Did, all the things that we did for the Lantern Energy, did they come to fruition? Like, did we get the savings that was expected? Or do we not know?
That's the part I was saying, we would have to go back and look at the numbers.
Would that, don't worry, not, not for the budget, but I would want to eventually know if these are paying off.
I think we should.
Yeah, if they're paying off, I'd like to know.
Susan?
Yes.
When I did these things with my businesses...
Yes.
The company that did it for me came back...
Okay.
And actually did the comparison for us.
Frank Frankel runs this program, I can, I can ask him.
Now, granted, it was maybe not as big as the town, you know, because we were like in one building, and, you know, but he did, well, he actually did several buildings for me, but...
I'm very happy the board is interested in this, because I am too, and I think we should do that, then. I think that's a good idea.
You're still in the payback, I think, you know, how do I break it even if not a few, you're still in the payback when you're doing it.
Yeah, I don't, I think, and I think that's what they, that's usually what they anticipate, they try to make it a wash during the payback, and then it's a...
Still in the payback.
That's fine, but I just want to make sure we're at the wash and not a...
I'll, I'll call the, the owner and ask him to help us with that. I think he'd happen to do that.
Every one of these that I did, there was an immediate savings. Now, not huge numbers, but it was positive, and then after the roughly two-year payback period, then the savings got significant.
You got better, right?
Yeah, yeah, but there was none. We, we didn't do any where we were actually paying out of pocket.
That's great.
Distribution of these things were high, distribution of 90, it got higher.
Okay, I'm, and I was just referring to...
That's the level.
Right.
So, it's all in your bill, you know what I mean? So, you got to have some, some...
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're doing, you're, you're putting in these energy-efficient lamps, but then they're upping the distribution cost that is negating the savings from this, you know?
But think if you didn't do it, it'd be even more.
Right, true, true.
Yeah, it just makes the analysis harder.
Yes.
But that's why it's important, there's now the connection fee, right? The connection charges is where they start working on it next.
Oh, it is a business.
Yeah, this is...
They have to keep their stockholders happy.
This is the exact stuff we did. Same forms and everything.
It was a program through Eversource.
The schools are very...
Yeah.
It is, I know this is a bit, you know, it is, it is, it was the highest level of the... I mean, obviously, that building is our biggest building, high school.
Yeah, biggest building. Anything else? Any comments?
Just one, on all of these lighting, I've heard, and I saw a part of it, I didn't have time to read through the whole thing, but it seems as if there's sensors on all those lighting, or just some of those lights, so that when somebody leaves the room, they go out?
So, the Buck Foreman has sensors. In fact, I sit there in the dark sometimes because I'm not moving enough, but in our building at Town Hall, no.
I would drive, they also did...
Sensors?
And that does have sensors.
How about the Sewer Department?
Sewer Department, we did a mix, like, some exterior lighting and, and did some exterior lighting with the high side.
This has had a three-year payback. Yeah, one of them had. This one had 40, that's kind of, well, what's the estimated payback?
I don't think the Senior Center is motioned about it.
After incentive, three years.
The lights are, and they're way up in the Senior Center.
Right, usually, okay, usually the financing is a little longer than the official payback, I think. I'm not sure why that is, but...
Any other questions?
And then, over here...
No, no questions, no, sorry.
That's okay, you can, that's fine.
We were just watching you review, it was pretty interesting.
This is what, this is what they kick in. So, this was the total project, so like, they kicked in a third, and you got, you saved 33 percent just off the top, hence it looks like a gift to you.
Is there a motion to adjourn the budget deliberations? Seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, now we'll start our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting, and let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved. I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim, motion made by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The regularly scheduled approval of minutes, February 21, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ralph, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Special meeting, February 26, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
Ralph?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And the budget workshop held March 20, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Ralph?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. We'd like to welcome our auditor, Mike Van Deventer is here, and he is with Mahoney Sable for our annual audit presentation. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
We have a few new selectmen you may not have met before.
I did not recognize two phases.
We have our news in front. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Mike Van Deventer, I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, and was ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit and issuing the audit reports on behalf of the firm. Obviously, you're dealing with fiscal year 2019 budgets, you're in the middle of your fiscal year 2018, and so hopefully this will put a close on your, your fiscal year 2017 results. You should have received, really, two... You should have received really two reports, a basic financial statement for the town, which is the very thick document, as well as a thinner document, which is your state single audit reports. I will not be going through those in detail. I do have a presentation that I'll run through, covers the scope of work, provides some financial highlights. I'll cover our required communications, and then certainly to the extent you have any questions, feel free to ask them as we go along. All right? If we can jump into slide two. In terms of the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements, and we performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, we also performed a state single audit based on the level of funding that was received from the state. The town did not meet the threshold this year for a federal single audit. That threshold is seven hundred and fifty thousand, and your expenditures for fiscal year two thousand seventeen was approximately five hundred and fifty-five thousand. In addition, we also performed an agreed upon procedures on the end of school year reports, which is the Form EDO-1 for the Board of Education, and those procedures are required by the State of Connecticut Department of Education. Any questions as far as the scope of work? Pretty straightforward. In connection with our work, we do issue a number of reports. The main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements. Our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement whether due to error or fraud, and that they've been prepared in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. Our opinion does cover multiple statements within your financial statements. It covers your governmental activities, the discreetly presented component unit, which is the Gildersleeve Wheeler Educational Trust Fund. Each of your major funds, which for the town was your general fund, your capital project fund, your capital nonrecurring fund, and then we issue an opinion on what we consider the aggregate remaining fund information, and that includes all of your non-major special revenue funds, your permanent fund, your internal service fund, your pension trust, private purpose trusts, and agency funds. So again, there's a lot of information included in these financial statements. Any questions as far as the report on the financial statements? So that is the opinion that you would want as a board. We also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. We do not actually express an opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations or on the effectiveness of your internal control. To the extent we've, to the extent during we, during the audit, if we identified what we consider to be material noncompliance of a law or regulation, or a significant deficiency or material weakness in your internal control structure, we are required to include it in this report, and we did not identify any such matters. In connection with the state single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the state financial assistance level. So here we are actually expressing an opinion on your major state programs. For fiscal year two thousand seventeen, total state financial assistance for the town was about five point eight million. Of that, about one million was considered nonexempt and subject to our testing. Your major programs for fiscal year two thousand seventeen was the Intertown Capital Equipment Program, the Municipal Grants and Aid, and the Open Choice Program. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your compliance with those programs, and again, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over compliance. And again, the main audit procedure there is testing to make sure that what you're charging to the grant is allowable under the grant requirements. All right? So overall, in terms of our reporting, very clean. The next section I'll go over is just some overall financial highlights. Your original and final budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen did provide for the use of fund balance of about three hundred thousand. Your actual change in fund balance was an increase of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, which resulted in a favorable budgetary variance of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. Your revenues and other financing sources were about two hundred thousand more than budgeted, and that represents just under a percent from your final budget. And your expenditures and other financing uses were five hundred and eighty-two thousand less than budgeted, which is just over about a percent of your overall budget. And again, we did not identify any budgetary compliance issues during the course of the audit. There are detailed schedules included in the financial statement that actually provides line item variances between budget and actual, and those are included in the supplemental information in the financial statements. The next slide goes over your governmental funds financial statements, and that can be found on page sixteen and eighteen of the basic financial statements. So this includes all of your governmental funds, your general fund, all of your special revenue and capital projects fund on a GAAP basis. Your combined ending fund balance as of June thirty, two thousand seventeen totaled about nine point two million, which was an increase of about eight hundred and sixty-two thousand from the prior year. The total fund balance consisted of about six point four million in your general fund. You do have a deficit in your capital project fund of about three hundred and sixty-four thousand. You have been funding that deficit, and so that is something that you have included as part of your overall budget, and that deficit should be eliminated in future years. You have about one point two million in your capital nonrecurring fund, and then all of your other funds had a fund balance of about one point nine million. And again, your overall increase was about eight hundred and sixty-one thousand. Your self-insured dental benefits fund had an ending fund balance of about three hundred and twenty-three thousand, which was an increase of about twenty-five thousand from the prior year, and that fund is adequately funded. And then the two items that you do also, and I know the board is aware of, you do continue to have a deficit in your sewer and water operating funds. The sewer fund actually had an increase in the deficit of about eighty thousand from the prior year, while the water fund actually had a decrease in the deficit of about eleven thousand. So again, you're aware of those deficits. I know though you're working on mitigation plans to address those deficit in future years. But just as part of our communications, I have to point that out to you. All right? Any questions as far as the governmental fund financial statements? Also wanted to cover your government-wide financial statements, and those really focus on your long-term liabilities. There's a lot of focus on your pension liabilities and your long-term debt. In terms of your town and police pension plan, the funded status was about sixty-five percent as of June thirty, two thousand seventeen, and that is using a discount rate of about seven and a half percent. We do look at the discount rate as a significant assumption. Seven and a half percent is probably on the higher of the reasonable range. We have seen a lot of municipalities start to come down a little bit more. The State of Connecticut is still using a discount rate of eight percent, so you're certainly not, you know, above, above the range. Your net pension liability for your town and police plan totaled about nine point seven million, which was a decrease of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand from the prior year. Your contributions made were about nine hundred and forty-four thousand, and that was approximately equal to the annual required contributions. In terms of the volunteer firefighters' benefit plan, your funded status was about twenty-one percent. You did just begin to fund that plan a couple of years ago. Previously, it was funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, so it will take some time to increase the funded status of the plan. You did utilize a discount rate of six percent. Your overall net pension liability was about nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, which was a decrease of about twelve thousand from the prior year. And again, your contributions made were about ninety thousand, which again was equal to the actuarially determined contribution. I did include a bullet here on the state teachers' retirement system. So again, this liability is not carried on the books of the town. Your net pension liability for the state teachers' retirement system that's attributed to the town totaled approximately thirty-two million as of June thirty, two thousand sixteen. Again, I know there's been some discussion at the state about potentially pushing some of these costs down onto the towns. The on-behalf payments that were made by the state on behalf of the town was about two point one million for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. So it is a significant burden on the state, and again, and just in terms of looking at what potential exposure the town has if they push those costs down, those are the amounts that are attributed to the town.
When you look at the on-behalf payments, Mike, is that the amount that the state contributed to the fund, or is that the amount that was paid out?
That was the amount that was contributed to the fund on behalf of the town.
Do you know how much they actually paid out?
No, they don't include that information.
And is it based on the teacher's last position? So if they worked for a period of time in Portland, is a portion of that pension attributed to Portland and the rest to the other town that the teacher may have worked in? Or is it the last town that they worked in? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't know offhand how that is basically determined. The state actually, the state auditors will audit the demographic information and the numbers that are included for us to include in your financial statements for disclosure purposes, but I will inquire about that.
I mean, that's the difficulty of towns taking on this pension, is that we didn't have anything to do with negotiating that pension.
Right.
And it's always, as far as I can recall, it's always been a responsibility of the state.
Correct. Yeah. All right. So again, this information is disclosed in your financial statements as a special funding arrangement, but it is not a liability with town. You do continue to report an unfunded other post-employment benefit obligation of about three point five million. This reflects the liability associated with post-employment health benefits provided to retired employees, and that primarily relates to an implicit benefit that the teachers receive, which is required by state law, that provides them with the ability to continue to access the Board of Education's health insurance plan upon retirement. The annual required contribution that was determined by the actuary totaled about two hundred and thirty-three thousand. The town has not established a trust, so you are funding that on a pay-as-you-go basis. The total amount that was recognized as a contribution was about a hundred and eighty-three thousand. And again, the entire amount of that liability will be reflected on your balance sheet next year when you implement some new GASB standards. Right now, it's just disclosure. In terms of your overall debt, again, you did not issue any new long-term debt during fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Your general obligation bonds decreased from about seven point nine million to about six point seven million due to scheduled debt service repayments. Your sewer and water notes decreased from about three point seven to about three point two million due to scheduled debt service repayments. And again, your capital leases decreased from about nine hundred and sixty-one thousand to six hundred and forty-seven thousand, and again, that's due to scheduled debt service repayments. We did include a subsequent event disclosure in your financial statements. During August two thousand seventeen, you did enter into a new capital lease arrangement in the amount of about one point six million to finance equipment and vehicles, again, for the benefit of various departments. Any questions as far as the overall financial highlights? Certainly to the extent as you go through the financial statements, if you have questions, I would direct those towards Susan and Tom, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
I have a question. So I know you talked about the pension, it was two point three million, but I, or two point one million. When we've heard us discuss this, I can't, like a number around four stuck in my head. Am I understanding the, is this truly the number that the state, or is there another number that should be included that the state contributes? I, I just trying to, can my head around the potential?
Yeah, are you talking about the on-behalf payments for the state teachers' retirement system?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, this, this number represents the amount that was determined as of the July first, two thousand and six actuarial valuation. That could be from a more recent actuarial valuation, which will again get incorporated into your future financial statements. There is a lot of significant fluctuation in the amount that's being allocated based on market returns and the discount rate that they're using.
Okay.
So, but this is the number that, again, was audited and provided, you know, to us as part of the audit.
Can you tell us the percent of our undesignedated fund balance?
I can calculate it for you. In the general fund?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a slight increase from last year?
That is a slight increase from last year. Yep, based on your budgetary surplus. And that represent approximately two months worth of your budget, or your expenditures. The GFOA does recommend that governments hold roughly two months of operating reserves on hand.
So we're in good shape?
Yes.
As far as that's concerned.
Yep. All right.
Especially as we go out to be rated via bonding?
Yeah, though, the rating agencies will probably still say that that's on the lower side compared to governments across the.
United States.
Across the United States. And again, I think that's been a point of emphasis, especially as the economic position of the State of Connecticut has deteriorated.
Do you know, do, is there an average for Connecticut towns? Do you know about what it is in other places?
Yeah, typically towns have about one to two months of operating reserves on hand. I haven't seen many municipalities that are above that, that two-month reserve.
Talking about averages, it looks like our debt's about eleven million, give or take. We went down about four hundred thousand. I think we paid off about two million last year, took on a new million six, keeping us around eleven million, give or take, in debt, and we're getting ready to debt up almost double that. How does that compare to other towns? And is that a factor when they look at that you're doubling your debt?
Not necessarily based on doubling your debt. I mean, I think they typically look at what your debt service is as a percentage of your overall budget. So again, I don't know what that percentage is offhand, but typically for municipalities in the State of Connecticut, that percentage is usually between five and ten percent.
Of your overall budget?
Of your overall budget in terms of debt service.
In terms of debt service?
Correct. So if I.
Okay. That doesn't answer my question. What's a comfortable number for a town to debt up? Like, a business can handle X. Town's one big business.
Yep.
What's a comfortable number?
Again, I think that they focus on the budget, so not necessarily your balance sheet, per se, in terms of, you know, will you have a significant increase in your debt service cost over, say, the next five years? Is that debt service funding relatively level? What is the town's overall plan? I mean, there's a lot more that goes into it from a rating agency's perspective than just the actual balance of debt that's outstanding. What you're using the debt for, again, if you're using the debt to fund your pension plans or to cover your operating costs, you know, that debt may be looked at differently than if you're funding capital improvements for the town.
So using rough numbers, and you could probably help me out, we're probably, what, somewhere around seven percent using the debt service of our budget?
Right.
Does that sound about right?
I'm gonna do a quick calculation for you.
That's.
It's roughly five percent.
Five?
Correct.
So.
And again, I've seen, you know, typically between five and ten percent, ten percent being on the higher side. So you would have to literally double your debt service.
Well, we're about to.
Yeah.
We have another ten million that we're about to bond, and then we have other infrastructure needs coming up in the future, so.
Yeah.
We're.
Yes, Tom?
Do you have the schedule of debt limitations?
Yep.
About eighty-sixty-nine, we gotta go over that a little bit without.
Schedule of debt limitations? So towns are restricted by statute in terms of how much they can actually borrow, and that is based on a multiple of your tax collections. So again, your present indebtedness for the, for the town, including authorized and unissued debt, which includes, I think, the, the new debt that you're going to be issuing, was about seventeen point eight million as of June thirtieth. And again, the capacity that the state has set is about a hundred and eighty-six million. So you have a significant amount of additional debt that, you know, by statute, you could, you could issue. And again, they do break that down in terms of what you can use it for, in terms of general purpose, schools, sewers, pension deficits, and those sorts of things. So again, I think you're well below. And again, they do break that down in terms of what you can use it for, in terms of general purpose, schools, sewers, pension deficits, and those sorts of things. So again, I think you're well below any threshold that would be of concern to any rating agencies.
Does that answer your question, Ben?
It does.
Good questions. Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to move on to our required communications, and again, these communications are required by our auditing standards. A lot of the communications are there to the extent that we actually ran into significant issues during the course of the audit. So these communications will actually be somewhat brief because, again, we did not run into any significant issues during the course of the audit. In terms of our responsibilities under U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of town management. All the information that is included in the financial statements does come from the town. We did not make any decisions in terms of the numbers that are included in the financial statements. Again, our responsibilities to perform our procedures and issue our opinion on the financial statements. In terms of the planned scope and timing of the audit, again, there was no change in the overall scope, and in terms of the timing of the audit, that did go as planned, and we did issue the reports by the December 31 deadline. In terms of significant audit findings, we do look at your accounting practices in disclosures. The town was required to implement a number of new standards during the year that is included in the financial statements. None of those standards had a significant impact on your financial statements. The disclosures included in the financial statements are deemed to be neutral, consistent, and clear. Again, we did not run into any significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We actually had no audit adjustments. There are very few towns that we do where we do not have audit adjustments. So again, the books and records were very clean when we came in to perform the audit.
Congratulations, Tom.
Once again.
There were no uncorrected misstatements, so to the extent we identify an adjustment during the course of the audit and we propose that to be recorded in your financial statements, if management elects not to record that, we're required to inform you. Again, we had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a representation letter. There was nothing unique in that letter that we would be required to inform you of, and we were not aware of any consultations with any other independent accountants. Again, if there was, we would be required to inform you.
What's the representation letter? Just somebody informing?
So a management representation letter is that, you know, basically during the course of performing the audit, management will make certain representations to us regarding, you know, whether or not there was any fraud, whether or not there was any noncompliance. And so this just basically documents those communications.
Okay. I didn't know if they hired an attorney or something when we said representation.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that is all I had in terms of communications with respect to the audit. Again, if you have any questions, my contact information is included.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Very good. Very good job, Tom Robbins. And the next item is public comment. Any public comment? At this point, we'll ... Excuse me. At this point, we'll move on to appointment of the auditor of public accounts, which you have attached to your agenda. Resolved that pursuant to Section 407 of the Portland Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable of 180 Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite 400, Glastonbury, Connecticut, 06033, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. So it would be for the year that we're in now. Is there a motion to ...
I'll make the motion.
Made by Ralph. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Rick. Any discussion on the motion?
What are the numbers? Would you do it for 40?
Actually, the number has, has it decreased over time and then?
I think we did it.
Yeah, so it's actually less than it was when Tom arrived.
Yeah. But there is a value to how good of a job you do, making his life that much easier. I'm just saying.
Nicely said, Ben. Yes, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mike, and your staff, for keeping our finances in order, and also, Tom, for having, again, a year, a repeat of no findings and no audit adjustments, which is really remarkable. So I appreciate it very much. Congratulations. Are you ready for the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. We'll see you in the office soon. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is the animal ordinance. We did have a public hearing earlier this evening on the proposed changes, and I'll open it up to the selectmen for discussion.
It seemed like the folks that were here thought it addresses the issue of roaming while protecting the rights of the property owners to have their own animals on the property, which I think was one of the goals, so there really was nothing negative that came out of that, came out of the hearing.
Yeah, it was a positive response to what we had proposed. The selectmen can choose to adopt this ordinance tonight, since there is no suggested changes to that which was presented at the public hearing. Are you ready for that?
Sure. I'm ready.
I'm okay with it.
Who would like to make the motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, Lou. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Excepted by Jim. Further discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So we'll proceed with the proper notification of the changes and record with the town clerk and also publish in the newspaper. Number nine. I wanted to give you an update on the title search that was done in regard to the pipeline on Brownstone Avenue. Last week, we had a meeting in Town Hall with our attorney, who is Al Smith. He is our environmental attorney for Martha Colina. Kiri Olson was there, as well as Amy Valenport, our licensed environmental professional from Ty &amp; Bond, and Corf Engineering from Marlborough, I believe, was representing the seller, and attorney Lee Johnson, who is representing the estate that the seller is the executor of. And we had a discussion along with the gentleman that owned the B&amp;B Petroleum, which is Ed Balarjyan.
Balarg.
Balarjyan, yes. And his son is also Ed, and I can get you the spelling of that name later. We also had a representative, Patrick LaFountain, from Buckeye Pipeline. And Mr. LaFountain let us know that indeed, the pipe, he's worked there since 1977, and it is a feeder pipe that goes from the area where it comes into the B&amp;B Petroleum property. And it goes, he said, along the river to behind what was the asphalt plant. He believes it then comes out to Brownstone Avenue along the property line that would be the asphalt plant and the parking lot that's there, the asphalt lot that's there, out onto Brownstone Avenue, and then it goes north to 248, which is where the tanks are. And he explained that the last time there was oil delivered to that site was April 30, 2010. And to the best of his knowledge, there is oil in that pipeline. It is of a higher sulfur content than heating oil is now. So he explained that it would have to be removed from the pipe and disposed of properly. In addition, he said that pipe would likely need to be cleaned. They call it pigging. So the device that they would put in that pipe would be cleaning that pipe and suggested, since he doesn't have the job, but he suggested this is the way they abandoned pipes, a type of grout is put into a pipe that would preserve the integrity of that pipe from any further degradation or collapse, which kind of makes some sense. He said that as a business, they would be happy to help in any way the seller to take care of this. We pointed out that it is an exception within the title search, and it's something that, as the potential buyer, we want taken care of by the seller. So the attorney said he needed to consult with his client, obviously, and would get back to us. In listening to the gentleman from Buckeye Pipeline, he does this frequently. They've done it in a number of different industrial locations throughout the state and probably outside of the state as well. And for them, they're in the business, they know how to do this. The attorney was not aware of all that he learned, so I think it was a good meeting. And the, Mr. LaFountain did point out that he had explained this to the best of his ability. I am, we are waiting to hear back from Mr. Johnson.
So who's going to tell us whether there's any contamination along the old pipe?
What Amy Valenport suggested, Ben, was that once the seller gets back to us and indicates what his plan is, then she would be in touch with Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to determine what they would accept as a quote-unquote "clean" pipe, as well as the environment in which it sits, whether or not they would suggest that there be further investigation. She didn't know. The fellow from Buckeye pointed out that this is typically a very thick pipe that's used for this type of project. They don't typically see a lot of problems, but it all depends on what your state agency suggests.
Well, in all fairness, I think it also, as long as Mr. Buckeye guy, LaFountain, is going to certify that the soil is clean?
No, he would not. He made it clear that he was there as a neighbor and as a person very familiar with pipelines. But he in no way was suggesting that he would do the job, that he is responsible for it. He did present a letter that he had shared, oh, he didn't present the letter, actually the realtor did. The letter showed that they had been asked, they, the owner, if they, Buckeye, could clean the pipe for them. And while there was a signature on that letter, Mr. LaFountain did not have a record that he had cleaned it. This was back in 2006. So he said, as far as he could remember, they did not, but the onus is on the owner to find that paperwork, not on the Buckeye Pipeline. But I will point out, and as a follow-up to your question, Ben, that Mr. Balarjyan said that he is very interested in getting this taken care of for his own property, because remember, there is an easement on his property as well as on Brownstone Avenue, regardless of the future of 248, 230, and 222 Brownstone Avenue. This is something that must be taken care of by the owner of that pipe, which at this point is the estate of John Beletti. James Roche is the executor, and Mr. Johnson is the attorney.
I, my, just so we're clear, my point was, I don't, obviously, time isn't the essence for the state cleanup money if this is what the voters want to do. I'm not going to be comfortable until somebody tells me that we're not taking on a pipeline that leaked at one point.
Right.
And so to speed things up, make sure everybody's clear, I'm going to want to see, and I believe Amy suggested in the last meeting, the way to do it is board testing every so many feet, I'm not an expert, she is. They need to get the ball rolling, because I, unless the state's going to give us a letter saying it's clean, I'm not taking on any extra liability for the residents of Portland, and I'm going to be very clear, and I'm going to be the spokesman, that we have to be careful what we're doing here, and the only way that I'm aware of through Amy, because of her statements and it's in the minutes, is the board testing, unless somebody else is willing to certify this in another way. So my point is, I'm not trying to derail this, so we're clear, but I am going to want to see this, so let's get moving.
Well, I think, I think you bring up an excellent point, Ben. The ownership of that pipe is a bit in question.
On which part? Not according to your Buckeye guy?
No, in terms of what you just said. I'm not ...
So, okay, finish.
What I'm saying is, it's clear that the pipeline that fed the tanks is owned by the current owners of 248.
Yes.
That does not logically infer that any future owner of 248 would also own that pipe. Does it?
I would argue, I went over this with Carrie, yes, I would, because it was clear, it was essential, it was marketed as a tank farm. We got into it knowing it was a tank farm. That was the supply for the tank farm. Yes, we would be liable, we would be accepting, in my opinion. I went over this with Carrie the night of the meeting afterwards. Yes, I do believe.
The meeting afterward?
No, at that meeting, and I said afterwards, Carrie, and I spoke.
Okay.
And I want to be clear.
Afterwards, you did too.
Yes. And Carrie was suggesting something to what you're saying right now, and I disagreed 100% because when we entered into this, we knew darn well the value, we knew darn well it was a tank farm, we knew there was, the tanks were utilized as that. That's, there was no secret to that. That was what we looked at and what we entered in. I do believe there would be, unless you're going to get me a letter saying there is no long-term liability of the pipe.
Well, the letter would be obtained for the town of Portland.
That's, but from who?
And that is, that is something that we would need to, I'm agreeing with you, that is something we need to verify, and that's what we're in the process of doing. We first ...
Having said ...
The next step is that the owner of the property needs to tell us how he is taking care of that pipe, because as I just said, regardless, the pipe is there.
Yes.
And as the selectmen, I'm hearing very loud and clearly from one person, but I've talked at other meetings with the other selectmen, that we expect that this pipe will be properly attended to, cleaned, and environmentally taken care of.
Yeah, long-term, I could get on board with abandoning it the way that they all have done, and if there's, you know, that does become a problem in the future when we try to use our own right-of-way, obviously, then we need to cut that pipe. There could be future, but I can get over that. That's not the end of the world. The part that I'm not going to get over and not going to change is, and we better tiptoe very carefully if we think we're going to ...
We are.
Exactly. If we think we're going to buy this and then possibly not have the liability of the future pipe, we need to know, residents need to know exactly what's in the ground there.
Of course.
And they need to make an educated decision on whether we're going to purchase it or move forward. And I think the only way we're going to get there is with those borings, unless there's a ...
And I'll repeat myself.
No, no, no.
We're not there yet, Ben. I am, I'm being very adamant that we need to have this taken care of, and I'm waiting respectfully, because it was just last week. And we also pointed out that it was a 90-day due diligence. The due diligence started January 26th, if I'm not mistaken. So we're close to the end of 90 days.
We're getting close.
So we mentioned that to the seller, and need to know, in addition to how he's going to address the pipe, he needs to tell us in terms of the ... to address the pipe, he needs to tell us in terms of the due diligence period, whether he's interested in extending it or not. Because at this point, we can't, and I wouldn't recommend that we take any further steps until this is, this is answered.
Okay.
We also had something, and we'll double-check on this too, Ben, in terms of our liability protection, in a discussion that we had with Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and our funder, which is Department of Economic and Community Development, and our LEP, two things. They said that that may be extended to the pipeline if that liability protection, if it meets their specifications, just as the property would, if it meets their specifications, which is the cleanup, we would get liability protection as well. So, that discussion was had with our funder and with DEEP, who, DEEP issues the liability protection paperwork to municipalities and to others that clean up property. So, that liability protection is given from further, further problems. And he indicated that perhaps the pipeline could be included too. But as you say, and that's why I said a little while ago, it would have to meet certain specifications, criteria, review, et cetera.
Right, and I find it hard to believe that they could include a potential pipeline and not know...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
What's there.
I'm saying exactly the same thing you're saying.
I thought so. I just don't want it to go slower. I feel like a lot of times pass and, I know the ball's in their court.
You know, yeah, and I haven't, and no, at no time during our meeting did we talk about the cost. So, I don't know what the cost is to the seller.
And I guess you wouldn't know that until DEEP makes their recommendation. So, if in fact DEEP makes a recommendation to clean the pipe and leave the pipe, I guess that's one thing. If DEEP decides that pipe has to come out of that property and under our road, and then the rest of the pipe is the responsibility of another owner that's, that is there.
And he may require that it, he didn't indicate that he would require that it be removed, but it's...
He would have to remove it, probably, remove it or clean it, once he's ready to sell it. Okay. So, I think we're at, you know, we're at a good place. We're not there yet. Okay, thank you.
I, I want to be careful on that. I don't know if DEEP is looking at it from a standpoint of purchasing it like we are. They're looking at it as, how do you safely deal with this pipe?
Well, they're looking at, right, they're looking at giving to the town liability protection. So, yes, it is in their interest because they are essentially giving you an insurance policy that says should there be a problem in the future, they would accommodate for that. I mean, that's what that liability protection is.
And if they're willing to do that without an assessment of what's there...
No, no one's saying that. Don't say that.
No, 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 I'm talking out loud. I'm talking out loud.
You're thinking out loud.
I'm making the statement that...
And I'm listening.
I hope that everybody's doing their due diligence. Time will tell.
I think, you don't think we're doing our due diligence?
I think we are.
All right, I want to know that.
Yeah, I think we are. I can't speak for any other agency that will get involved in, from what I've seen with...
And that's our response.
I'll stop there. I could, I could say a lot of things, but it'll end up ending with Hartford getting 500 million, so. We'll just move on.
Okay, one last question.
Yes.
The, you've already met with the owners, the property, the attorneys on both sides, Valencourt. So, now, when's the next meeting to, I guess it's in the owner's court? Okay, so we just have to wait for them to respond? Okay.
And I will certainly let you know and give a full report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you to everybody who attended the meeting. And just in summary, I think it is important to point out that our neighbors down there, the B&amp;B Petroleum has been very helpful, as has Buckeye Pipeline. They're very, very, very knowledgeable owners, very, very responsible, and they're being a great help to the town of Portland, so I want to publicly thank the owners of...
Aren't they the ones that brought it up?
Yes. And, well, they brought it up at the public hearing, and then remember the next day, I was reviewing with our attorney the actual litany of things that they go through when you're purchasing property, i.e. the title search. And it came up in the search too, which means legally, what we had to do by, there's so many days after you sign the purchase and sale agreement, as you know, as a realtor, you know this, you have to identify those problems that you need to have rectified before you proceed. That was key in terms of the title search, that we sent that next day to Mr. Johnson. So, he was noticed that that was an issue.
Is there any, I don't know, do you feel at all uneasy maybe that this pipeline like got missed on the first analysis of the property?
Well, we talked about that at the meeting.
With Amy?
Yeah, we talked about that. And all of the maps, there's maps that come from Yukon, there's the standard maps that they use when they do Phase 1, 2, and 3. They all say Buckeye Pipeline on the maps. And Mr. Johnson wasn't aware, because he's the attorney, of course, he's, he does, he's not a person that delivers oil. He wouldn't know that. But all of the maps indicated that. And I'll also point out that when you look at the reports for the Phase 1, 2, and 3, Licensed Environmental Protection, or Licensed Environmental Professional, excuse me, they state that in no way are they doing a title search, or are they attesting, as an attorney would, to the integrity of the title.
Could I have a copy of the title search at some point?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Sooner than later. I said, I said some point. Let me rephrase that, sooner than later.
My door is open all the time. In fact, I think I've had other people ask me for it, so I think I can just resend that email to you, Ben.
You?
Okay.
Very helpful, as usual. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate your, your help and your interest. This next item is kind of interesting. I don't know if Michelle put it in your packets, but I'll just point out that on occasion, we do proclamations, and there was a gentleman who was turning 100 years old in Florida. His name is Arthur F. Kingsbury II. He's turning 100 this month of April. So, on behalf of the board, we did send him a congratulations and a proclamation on the achievement of 100 years on this earth. As we did on behalf of the board of selectmen, and I know, I think Ralph was, were you at, you were at the Spirit of Portland, Ralph Paley's Spirit of Portland Award, which is really one of the nicest days, I think, that we have here in town, where we recognize three people who go over and above in terms of service to our town. Mr. Paley was one of our very beloved service folks in Portland, and his family, every year remembers their dad by sponsoring the day. And this year, it was Rosalani Ferguson, Joyce Gent, and George Gilbert Jr. Rosalani has been very active in a variety of activities in Portland, including many, many years as a CCD teacher at St. Mary's Church. Joyce Gent, as you may know, I think she's the founder, as well as the participant and promoter of the Middlesex Hospital Vocal Courts. Tremendous amount that she does with that, among many other things. And then Mr. Gilbert, George Gilbert Jr., right now is the president of our Portland Historical Society, and he too, and his entire family, have done a tremendous amount for our town of Portland. So, it was a great day, and we congratulate all of them. The next item on number 12 is the tax suspense list, and Nancy DiGeralamo gave to you the accounts that she believes should be transferred to the municipal suspense tax book. This is something that is done annually by the collector of revenue, and the list represents those accounts of which delinquent notices have been either returned from the post office as undeliverable, or the taxpayer is deceased. The State of Connecticut Motor Vehicle Department was notified immediately upon becoming delinquent, resulting in the denial of any registration with their department until the taxes were paid in full in the delinquent taxpayer's name, including those accounts put on suspense. So, the fact that it's on the list doesn't mean those individuals could register a vehicle. They would still need to pay the town before they could be registered. She lists the 2014 Grand List Motor Vehicle Delinquent List as being $7,222.53. And the 2014 Grand List Motor Vehicle Supplemental List, total $1,113.59. And the grand total requested for your approval is $8,336.12. What this indicates is, as the collector of revenue, Nancy reports what she expects to collect. She does not expect that this amount would be collected. However, as she pointed out, you can't register your vehicle unless it is paid. So, it still remains a debt that the individual owes. It's just a matter of being upfront and honest to the public to tell them she doesn't believe that these are collectible. You might want to take a minute and look at the list. And the reasons are listed there as well.
If someone is deceased...
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
There's a death certificate that has to be submitted to the town. Then the, I guess is the heirs of that deceased could be notified?
Do you know anything about that, Tom?
I went, I went through it. The way it works, obviously, my parents died, they had motor vehicles registered, the vehicles are still here, the taxes are still due. The estate should pay. But that's not how it always works. Not every family would, if they move out of state or don't, if they want to then change the name to their own, good luck.
So, you're saying that she thinks she's going to, she's not going to collect this one?
That's what she said. As I said, she's being honest about what she thinks is not collectible. So, Thomas comes off as an active receivable, but rather it's on the suspense list receivables?
Yeah, sure. Now, for those that are out of state, she knows that, knows where they are?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Well, if you don't, if I have to mail the letter, I'm back to Russell, I don't know who they are.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So, you, you do your best, and that's all you can do?
Yeah, and that's just, back, a few years back, we were trying to dispense, and she's not doing that, she's taking people that expect, got them. Now, the court used to just take, grant this year, more people, because it's covered by state, sort of, or, which is why they're, I watched, so, and that would take people that would think, the letter in the back, they know who they are, and that.
Years ago, there was a court called Small Claims Court. I'm not sure if that's still in existence. Is it, is it?
I don't know if it's still in existence.
Yeah, and I was just wondering if, if there were people that she knew or had made contact with, could they go through Small Claims Court to receive this, receive the taxes?
As long as they know where they could send the letter, that's...
If they know, yeah, if they know.
...that they have to show up at the small claims.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like, there's a, maybe, there's a couple of DVDs that are, one is a loss, and the other, that's, there's, of course, you may know, it's a period, you know, similar to the letter, come out of color, and, like, you can engage them to take on your personal property and take their suspense, but after they go and collect something, like, hard on their own, collect the money, maybe they're, they get a piece from their people, pay any business, and that, that's what they can be heard, so, harder to, to, to the taxpayer.
Okay, is this a year's worth? This is only a year, right?
It's identified as 2014's list. Only 2014. Grand list.
Oh. Is this kind of a typical amount every year?
Yeah. I think it's lower than it used to be.
I can remember people doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's lower. She's, she's...
So, what happens when, when somebody dies and they go to settle the estate? Isn't, you can't...
It may not be an estate.
Oh.
Not every death results in an estate, I suppose, whether they be...
Go to probate.
Yeah, I, I don't know that everyone files with...
And again, it's collectible.
Depending on...
It gets what? It just goes to the suspense list, because you can, you, she wants suspense, you know, you don't think it's a lot different. It turns out it is collectible. So, that's why, it's just a, it's a normal process to go through, ends up with not, with collectibles, and helps, generally, the collectibles that are, are, you know, which are not collectibles or not.
Ken, this is, that's just a question. These people that moved out of state, can they register a car out of state?
They gotta, that, I guess, they can, later.
I mean, does, does that state go back to the state that they were living in previous to double-check?
I don't know, I know it is.
All right.
And maybe in some places, not, you know, depends probably two way you move.
Yeah.
I think more or less it's the same, since she mailed it, so, back on the, that's more of the letter side, than I do, but what she's doing, people that are present, know them, but, this is, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm, people are...
Are you ready to accept it tonight? Do you want to wait?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'm fine. I'll make the motion.
Ben, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lou. Further discussion or questions?
You got the next one.
There being none, all in favor of approval of the suspense list?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, I know we have some appointments to boards and commissions, and Sharon, just to back up, actually, the suspense list, we should list it in the motion as the total amount of 8,336.12, and the motor vehicle, and the...
So, I don't need, probably, anything on the grid, she, I just can tell those, or you also open?
I think, I think that would be sufficient, what's, what's on the agenda. So, anyway, back to the list. Appointments to boards and commissions. I know Rick has two tonight.
Yeah.
Yep, and I checked those positions, and they are most certainly available.
Okay, so...
Yep, so you'd like to make them?
All right, I'd like to appoint Angela Hammond to Economic Development Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second, please.
Seconded by Ben. And Angela will be taking the position that was firmly held by Tim Roy.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And then, I believe we appointed, the Republican Town Committee appointed someone to, as an alternate to Parks and Rec, a month or two ago, and then the person didn't...
No, what it was, I think, was Mr. Labadia, but he cannot, he cannot, so, he resigned.
Oh, was that it?
And...
Well, he resigned, yeah. So, there was someone I thought the Republicans had some on.
Yeah, I do have a...
Connor Donahue.
Right. So, I'd like to...
Connor Donahue.
Nominate Connor, Connor Donahue for the alternate, as an alternate.
Park and Rec.
For Park and Rec.
For Park and Rec.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Rick.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I just have one. Um, I'd like to nominate Maureen O'Doherty to fill the alternate vacancy on the Inland Wetlands Commission.
So that's an alternate on inland wetlands, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Who, who seconded that?
Ben.
Six letters.
Now, we have quite a list of refunds. So, who's volunteering?
I'll second.
I'll read them and talk.
Um, Jim, Jim Tripp, we're gonna give you the.
We'll get through them. All right. A motion to refund $4,399.04 to Gordon H. Otake and Donna Re- Donna E. Reenie.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $56.11 to Susan K. Glover.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to refund $2,231.43 to Kathleen Bagadinsky.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $3,874.99 to Benjamin R. Sanborn and, I'm gonna say, Elena Palent Sanborn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion refund $59.53 to Daniels Propane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $42.09 to Judith N. Thompson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $2,688.37 to Norman P. Jacob and Mary E. Meehan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $5,000, uh, $5,069.69 to Daniels Family Poland Realty Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $145.92 to Sharon T. Finney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $3,558.71 to Brian S. Wallace and Elizabeth Wallace.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $77.44 to, um, Louis B. Fairman, um, Esquire, I think it's Esquire.
The state.
A state, uh, there he is, uh, I mean, Lane, and then I guess the state DBA, um, Connection Realty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $35.50 to Timothy L. Dean and Amy E. Dean.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $227.38 to Joseph T. Kelly and Melissa C. Kelly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to refund $10 to Lawrence and Trusilla Harder.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion refund $205.12 to Kevin Perini.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion refund $2,175.86 to Joanne K. Warner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A motion to refund $7.41 to Brian Christensen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to refund $54.62, $62.02 to VW Credit Leasing Limited.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status reports? Any status reports tonight?
No, I think it's general information.
Yeah, I can give a status report in terms of, um, attended the Water and Sewer Commission meeting. Um, you know, a couple of issues that obviously are ongoing. One is the request, um, looking at, basically looking for an evaluation of the rates and a plan. Uh, right now, we are running in the black in the water. I think we retired based on, and we heard it in the audit tonight, $11,000 of what is currently in the fund balance that is owed to the general fund. Um, but in the sewer, that fund actually, the deficit actually grew, um, I think right around $81,000. And that's about the current run rate. So they are looking to do something with the rates there. So obviously, they, you know, that's something we need to look at. One of the, um, things I wanted to talk about with this board, you know, here tonight, is, uh, there was an existing committee to actually have a water and sewer to start evaluating, uh, and start looking at some of those types of issues that we need to look at going forward, both on the water side and, uh, from a rates perspective, but also what can we do from a planning perspective, long-range planning. Um, I would think that's probably a committee we should reactivate and start trying to take a focus look like we've done with, with other things, like sidewalks, et cetera, so.
Do we have any volunteers?
Obviously, I'm.
Ralph? Jim?
Yeah.
Susan?
Is there someone else?
Oh.
I think, down this end?
All right. What, all right.
Do you want to?
So what, what, what are you looking to do? Another subcommittee?
This is subcommittee similar to, it's basically an existing subcommittee that it, I guess, has been dormant since Carl Judson passed away. And it's effectively to start taking a look at some of the issues for water and sewer, um, in, in a focused way. And not dissimilar to what we did, um, with the sidewalk ordinance, subcommittee, et cetera. This would obviously be focusing on water and sewer. Basically reactivating a form, you know, an existing committee.
Susan, is there?
Yes.
Any way in the future to look into, um, how much seepage we have into the sewer plant system? Because essentially, only the sewer users would be putting that fill when it could be seeping in from our road infrastructure, um, adding lots of gallons to be processed at the sewer plant, um, which, that would be a liability to all the residents, in my opinion. I don't know if there's a way we could figure out if there is storm water getting in. I think it's pretty easy to tell when it rains a lot, if there's storm water getting in, and then where's it coming from. But I'd be curious to see if there is a way to identify, well, there's, you know, for example, if we're only, and this is not the case, because people water their lawns, wash their cars, but if you were processing way more gallons than we were purchasing, well, obviously, that would be an easy way to determine that. Um, I was just curious, uh, because that's something that needs to be looked into, because sewer and water have big, big financial issues that we need to resolve.
Sure.
I think we need to.
I think that's something the committee should definitely investigate.
Yeah, I think we need to do it in a fair way. I like the fire hydrant fee that the rest of the town is paying. I, I personally don't have, uh, city water, but I do believe that there's certain responsibilities, uh, like the fire hydrants. I have absolutely no issue as a resident, and I think we have to start talking about seepage in, um, to the sewer plant, because that's not all necessarily on the sewer user. So, uh, and we need to identify that, and we need to hopefully rectify it too, uh, through identification, but I think it's something that needs to be looked into.
Can I do?
Thank you.
So in terms of the committee, does someone want to make a motion so that we have appointed Ralph, Jim, and Rick as members of the Water and Sewer Commission? Or, not, excuse me, Commission Committee? Ben?
No, I was just thinking, I, I might go, but if, if I get on another committee, my wife will probably be the next visitor to this.
You can always attend.
You can take it, Ben, if you want.
You can always attend.
Just invite me once in a while.
And you could be part of that, too. But what we're appointing is part of the board of selection. But as the liaison from Water and Sewer, we'll put you on. So we'll put, um, David Kosminski as the liaison from Water and Sewer to join the group. That would be helpful, David, thank you. I just wanted to have a motion made by you, Ben.
Oh, sure. I'll make the motion for the appointment of those three, uh.
And David as the liaison from Water and Sewer.
And David as the liaison.
Second.
Seconded by Lou. And everyone is welcome to attend those meetings.
Seconded by Ben, seconded by Lou.
And what we do is, um, Ben, we, we'll notice it, if there's four or more members, then it's considered a meeting.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Having, so that maybe she was on, should last night, because we had a lot of board about here. Should that have been joining?
Well, it was, it was a meeting that was on a particular topic, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I just, like, okay. But, okay.
Are you raising your hand?
No, no, put it down. You sure you don't want to phrase it? You're not raising your hand, right?
What are you volunteering for? Gotta watch that motion. All right, all, we did all in favor?
We did.
Okay, so we're all seven. Thank you. Jim, is there any other status report?
Uh, no, that's the, um.
Any other statuses?
I guess, actually, the only other one, well, actually, I'll let Ralph do it, you know. You wanna talk about the?
I don't know if you're.
I'm sorry?
Well, I guess the only other thing we could bring up is, obviously, we, uh, we did open the bids for our, our park, plan and development, and for the development of the park. And, uh, Weston Sampson Engineering Firm is currently, uh, gonna do due diligence to go through the list, make sure all the math's good, call up on any references, and, uh, let us know as soon as they feel comfortable to propose, um, propose one of the groups to us, one of the developers to us.
How many bidders were there?
There were six.
Good.
Well attended.
Do we, uh, did we get the bids back on the sidewalk? Are they closed? How many bidders?
Not yet.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson?
I wasn't looking for results, I was just looking for bidder, number of bidders.
And, uh.
Still out.
Okay.
Spring Street has not been issued yet.
Are we out to bid on that one? On Spring already? I didn't think so. Right? Before it goes out to bid, right? Or it's already out?
No, maybe not, before it goes out.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay, that's what I thought. I didn't.
Not yet. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Not yet. Okay. And we'll move on to public comment. Catch.
Um, yeah, I just, um, I think that the, um, report you gave on the potential property problem is worse than, um, you're expecting to have the answer by end of April, within the 90 days, or you think because of the problems, it's gonna take longer?
Uh, if I had to guess, it may be longer. Certainly in terms of resolution catch, I think it could be.
There we go.
What I, what we said was, we noted that the due diligence period ends 90 days.
The, um, the integrity of the pipe at this moment is not compromised, not for us.
I cannot tell you, because I have not seen any report on it.
And is there a report forthcoming on that? Um, is that ready to provide right now?
Well, that's what we're asking the seller to respond to us on. Um, in terms of demand, we didn't get to that point. We asked last week. But remember, the other party has an easement that they hold, that they gave to 248, which was port oil. They have some things within their easement, for their property, that they could enforce. But I think they, that's why they were at the meeting, and they too are waiting for the answer.
If the pipe gets crushed, you know, for whatever reason, um, it, it belongs, the repercussions to that belong to the current owner.
Correct. But as, and again, I'll reiterate, I think you already know it, but for the audience, um, the town, in, I believe it was 1981, granted the easement to port oil in our town road.
It's not a great situation. Um, the other question I have, and if it goes to Water and Sewer, um, actually, the, um, the delinquent counts, maybe, where do we stand with Water and Sewer as far as the delinquent counts? Remember, before we increased sewer rates, there was a conversation about, um, X amount of dollars being owed.
I think I may have a list with, because Tom gave me a list. Just bear with me for a minute.
Can we tie those registrations to?
I don't know if we legally can do that, but what we do tie to it? Go ahead, Tom.
So, you know, the, uh, the water, we send out commands, um, recently, you've got two, and we're, we must get a little bigger, um, that, you know, we pay, we have that. Um, you know, we, you know, shut off programs, you know, most times, people, people order to shut off, and, you know, it gets into a whole, in a, and, 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 they call off, and, 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 you get to, you know, um, you get, obviously, it's a, a interest rate that we charge, so that's, uh, you know, you get a re-return, and people are paying, and so we, we like that as well, you know, come through the cycle, you go after, you know, the, the, the department does their own business with, to me, the, 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 you know, the, the, and all that, and they periodically have to approve, the, uh, review, you say, you know, do that, do that, go, go, shut off, and these, like, the tax sales, these.
I remember that was, come that evening, but one of the problems was that we have, um, renters. Yeah, and absentee, and absentee landlords.
Those, we get tax sales, they're on.
And there is a tax sale tomorrow. One property is being sold tomorrow at 10 o'clock at, um, Buckwood. Um, in terms of aged receivables, um, zero to 90 days, there's total water, sewer, including penalty and miscellaneous fees, a total of $66,556.
$66,556.
Five five six. 91 to 180 days, $60,517. 181 to 270 days, $33,618. So it goes down a little bit. 271 to 360 days, $25,074. That goes down. But then, more than 360 days, $56,472.
Why don't we just shut their water off?
We do on occasion, depending on the amount. We do.
Somebody mentioned renters. Can, does the meter have to be taken out in the landlord's name, or are there renters that turn their water on?
They have, like, could they have someone who's a renter, doing with a renter base? So that's all set up, to, they set up, certain guys, it's, you know, it's, it's a, a, a rental standard renter, usually, that with the.
Would you have recourse to the property then, or no?
It ultimately goes back to the property owner, even if they have, um, you know, a, 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 You know, liability, this is, lies with them.
I'd be curious to see if we're opening ourselves up on that, because if you're giving the account to a certain name, they're not the owner. Okay.
Yeah.
I was hoping there was more, I, I, I'm just asking.
Yeah, they have, uh, the department has it all.
Just asking.
So, if they don't pay and you turn off their water, do you leave it off until they pay?
Typically, and, and there's certain...
And they're still this delinquent?
No, no, let, hold, hold, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
What, what typically happens is letters go out, and people respond. Oh, my gosh, I forgot, I took care of it. People don't. And then the next letter goes, and they don't. It gets to a point, and Rick's office, in concert with the collective revenue and the director of finance, they go out and they send notices, you are delinquent, shut off, it's going to occur on such and such a date. Typically, let's say nine out of ten, if they send out ten notices, eight respond, and they pay. Maybe one does a, I'm just winging it here, one may come in and set up their payment plan. The last one doesn't read their mail, doesn't believe it's gonna happen, and they have to come in. If they're still living there, because sometimes, Rick, they may not be living there, but if they're still living there, sometimes people come in, oh, I forgot all about it, I didn't take, here's my money, or, oh, my gosh, what am I gonna do? But most of the time, it's resolved. Wouldn't you say, David?
For the most part, they, uh, the, the, the utility companies have requirements, just like the electric companies. You know, if, if your power company can't turn the power off in the wintertime and so forth, then we have similar requirements. But basically, there is a, a set process that, that you have to take through, as, as, as I was saying. You know, the letters go out, we have so many days to respond, then, then it goes to the next step, the next step. You know, ultimately, it, you know, uh, it, it, you know, boils down to, you know, giving them a shut off date. We have gone out and shut off, but, you know, we're not, I mean, if you get down to, you know, uh, investor-owned companies, man, oh, 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 they shut them off. We're, we're a lot more immediate, and I think we have to start, you know, getting a little bit more.
Lou?
Yeah, a question per day. Uh, do we, can we put a lien on their property?
Yes. Oh, we do.
Yes, we do.
There's a lien process. Good question.
So, I mean, so, most of them are involved in the process of the collections, carrying, on the higher level stuff. So, everything's being, you know, like, uh, whether you want a lien per year, it's not, uh, of approval, or reputation, or attorney. Uh, again, you know, there's various things that we do when the town elects. We do tax sales at times, we do shut offs, um, we go and ask, we talk to, if you have a mortgage company, if you don't, if you don't, they'll give you an opportunity to pay, if you don't pay, pay, or go to a mortgage company. Um, you know, then we do those, we do shut offs, there's various thresholds that, you know, I, I, I scope. Um, and I scope through, and pick ones where I feel I need to. There's a continual rotation of who is the one. Uh, you know, and some, some of them, you know, they are, have been a long time, and some of it's, you know, a little, a little bit of money that's hasn't been paid for a long, long time. Now, you go after that, you can do that. But, I mean, it's all we, if they sell the house, you're gonna get the money, or transfer their house, you're gonna get the money. They're paying eighteen percent interest, and they get it.
So, on the, on the ones that are over three hundred and sixty, is it a fair assumption to say, for the most part, they may be shut off ones? Or how's that work?
I mean, I mean, again, if they're, i- i- if, uh, if the...
If they're not on a payment plan that we've already had, discussed.
Often, it would be on, cer- certain people that are not, before I got here, before I had payment plans, it was very reasonable. So, there's some people that are, you know, whatever, there's a payment plan, that's, they're doing it, you know? But it's gonna never go away, because it's a big, uh, the interest is bigger than the payment. Um, then there's other people that, that just, it accumulates, you know, a whack. And some of them are just, are the, the dollars that are used, you know? Uh, there, there's some small accounts where they just, you know, there'd be five hundred dollars, because it's just, they're paid a long, long time. He said, when you start going after some of those, there's a time period, when you do go after those, and you spend, you know, the money out, you have to pay for, you know, somebody has to do, do, do the duty, and you have to do the job. And they, you know, then if they come back, and it's after hours, people have to come back after hours, late, people drink water, or somehow there's a medical issue that you're unaware of, or there's a trouble, and so it's, you try to do our diligence on those, try to collect, uh, they must be getting. And this is a, and this was, this, this one was here, was given, was, uh, our service, and so we gave it out. And this billing, billing goes out in April, so, again, you bill in April, a lot of times, you'll get a nice, uh, hit and collection. So, we, you know, you know, so, from my standpoint, I didn't go through another review on this, without waiting for that cycle to go out. It will go out, and then with that, you know, you, you also, you often get much pay now, you know, if they're, you know, if they're out there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Board of selectmen, general informal discussion.
I have a question.
Lou?
Uh, recently, we received a letter, um, I received a letter from Michelle.
Yes.
About flags that are gonna be placed at the graves of veterans.
Yes, yep.
And Andrea Farrington seems to be the person who has, uh, provided those flags to us over time.
Yes.
And it seemed like this went out to a, a bid. I, I don't know why.
Quotes.
It went out for bid because it's only a dollar and sixteen cents a piece, or a dollar seventeen cents a piece. And Andrea's wondering why we went out to a different bidder. A couple of things. One, are the flags that she provides us made in America? And two, are the, the lowest bidders, are those flags made in America?
Yes.
And then, the question is, when you read the rules.
Yes.
The information you sent us, it does say, uh, it is recognized that there are times when competitive bidding may not be in the best interest of the town, section twelve oh eight. The charter recognizes this and authorized the board of selectmen to waive the competitive bidding when deemed in the best interest of the town. She is a taxpayer. Maybe you can fill me in on why we went to a different bidder or a different vendor?
We, we go out for quotes for a certain amount of expected cost for a product, and we got some quotes back, which we've done almost every year that I can remember. And typically, she has been the lowest quote. This year, she wasn't. And another vendor that doesn't live in town and doesn't have a business in town was the successful low quote. The competitive bidding is something that we typically use when we decide we don't want to go out for a bid. This is not a bid, this is a quote, that I think is, the thresholds are listed in our policy. One of the reasons I sent it to you is you may want to look, and Ben had pointed this out in the past, if it's not a federal, federal funding, if you're using federal funds, you have to take the lowest responsible bidder. You can't have a home rule or have someone that's in the town if they pay, if they're gonna charge you more. Federal dollars don't allow that. Our regulations don't allow discretion for my, our office, I should say, the finance office in my office, to waive the quoting if someone comes in lower, but it's less than, let's say, ten percent, and I could give it to the local vendor, but you haven't given me that authorization. So I'm following the rules that you've given us for purchasing. Now, you can choose to change those, and that's why I sent you the letter, and I sent you the purchasing rules. But that's up to this board. I, best of my ability, I do everything by your rules. And certainly, our finance department, I think you heard that tonight, we follow to the best of our abilities the rules associated with finance. So, we do what you tell us to do. But the competitive bidding is more, um, when you waive the bidding, so you actually don't go out for a ten thousand dollar or more product, um, and you tell us, we can waive that bidding, but we have to come to you to get that waiver. And that has happened.
Okay. So, um, I don't know, I think that, you know, she's been, she is a taxpayer.
Yes.
Uh, there are some rules that say that, you know, that's one of the things that we would look at. It also says that, um, the lowest bidder or lowest offer may not be the one that we choose. So it looks like we are in compliance with those rules, but now you say that the money that's used for this is federal money?
No, I'm saying if you had a product, or you were using federal funds.
Okay, but we're not.
We're not, we're not.
Okay.
But what I'm, what I'm also saying.
Okay.
Is if you chose to change your purchasing regulations, that would only pertain to certain funds. Federal funds does not allow any municipality in the United States to say, oh, you, say we're in Chicago. Okay, you're a Chicago vendor, so we're gonna give you, uh, a, a ten percent waiver, so to speak. If you're over by ten percent, we're gonna give it to you. You can't do that with federal money. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't think there's restrictions. I don't know about state funding.
I don't have it in front of me. What were the dollar months that we're talking about here?
Forty dollars.
Difference.
Difference.
Hundred and five, forty-one, or something like...
I've, since I've been on the board, I've advocated for, I do believe Portland businesses should, and I think Middletown has this policy, I don't know, the percentage is either five or ten percent within bid, they get it, if they're an in-town business. And I think that is a good thing to support. Um, I think Portland's, whatever, and Susan can correct me, I think our jobs in the past ten years have gone from something like three thousand in, in Portland to two thousand. We've lost about a third, give or take, from an old set of numbers that I saw. Don't quote me on that, but they're big numbers.
Sure.
We've lost jobs. You can quote me on that. I think it's important that we support local businesses, especially ones that pay a lot in taxes. Um, so I'm comfortable with, in the future, drafting up a, a rule that does allow this in local bidding. And I think it's a good thing for the community. You, you look at a lot of these bigger jobs where they're coming from out of state, you know, who knows where our road job, where our park. If there is somebody, and I'm not saying we have anybody that could potentially bid those, but if we did, I think it'd be a wonderful thing. Chances are, they employ Portland people, chances are, they pay a lot in Portland taxes, and maybe that's part of the criteria. You have to, not only, you have to employ somebody from Portland, you have to pay Portland taxes. You can write this rule however you want, and I, but I do believe we need to do that, we need to do it sooner than later. It sounds like another good example of why.
So, I understand when we're talking about flags, and we're talking about a forty dollar difference. But if we were getting bids on a ten million dollar project.
Yep.
Ten percent becomes a very significant number.
I think you'd have to do thresholds, right? So it would be one percentage, right?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I, I mean, there's a number we have to go up to, and then we, I don't know if they want to...
And that may be the way Middletown's is written.
Exactly.
There may be those thresholds, but keep in mind, the larger the bid, you take, you, you take a ten million dollar, uh, project, they're gonna show up with five million worth of equipment to do that project. They, chances are, aren't leasing or renting at all, or even if they lease it, we get paid. There's a substantial, these are the type, and we don't have, I don't believe we have a company in Portland that is that size, but those are the ti... A lot of people don't realize, like, you take an oil truck, what do you think they pay in taxes? An oil truck in Portland pays thousands in taxes. Those, that's great, we need a lot of oil trucks, I got no issue with them. No, really, these are the things, a triaxle dump truck, same thing. They can go into any town, they can register in any town. If we start incentivizing to get them in our town, that's, we're gonna win. These are the things we're gonna need to look at in the future, because we're not, we're not gonna gain.
Yep.
The money we need.
No, I, I, I think you should revisit your purchasing regulations, particularly since some of you may not have seen them before. So that's why I provided them to you. I'd be happy to have you review them officially if you'd like to, for updates.
And if you could get us a copy of Middletown's to start with.
Sure.
Um, I think that would help the board, at least, and it may be like what Ralph said, a sliding scale, and I, I, I do agree with that, by the way. Um, so, but we need to, we need to start. Sorry, I'm dying over here. That's one way to shut me up. Give me a second.
There's water in that, Ben. Do you want me to go get you a drink of water?
No, thank you. Thank goodness. What's that? I'm not. Believe it or not, though, we had a really large bill that I did not dispute. It was like ten times.
So, these, these have been purchased?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just think that, yeah.
I know, I felt, honestly, I felt terrible.
Yeah.
But I also have to follow the rules. And in the past several years, that particular vendor, the concert hut, came in low. This year, they didn't. Um, and I'll also point out that we, the town of Portland, do purchase many other items from that business. And so do our employees, some of them get a stipend within the union contract for their uniforms, and some of them purchase their uniforms there, and we do purchase, um, many other items from that store. So it's not that we preclude that store. This was a particular quote for a particular purchase. Following the purchasing regulations, another vendor was the low quote.
And these, is that enough flags for all of the identified?
That's what I understand.
Okay, 'cause that would be another...
They got quite a few.
Who puts them out?
Uh, the veterans. And then they usually pick them up and...
How many flags do we buy, and how much money do we spend here? What are we talking for?
I don't know.
It was in here.
About six hundred dollars, Tom?
Yeah, I think it was six...
Obviously, we, we have very strong internal controls. Uh, we, we noted tonight in our audit, we follow internal controls, we follow the regulations, we follow our purchasing policies. We implement those purchasing policies, we're very diligent, trying to do as much as we can, follow everything we can do. Basically, the departments know, um, in this instance, I assume there's some semblance of related party transaction with owners. I assume that this is a veterans' commission. I know there's some people there that are related in that instance. We try to make an arms-length transaction, and that's what we try to do with the town, we try to do arms-length transactions. Three really good quotes we missed, in this instance, another vendor won that quote. I know there are many years in a row, the other vendor has won, and that's a great thing. We love to do that, and we love to see that for that person. Uh, you know, but this is a, you know, they're charitied with another great vendor of ours. They provide many of our banners in town, that we have on Main Street, GSA Vendor, doing good work for us. Uh, not, not, not an unconfident vendor to us. And, uh, that, you know, they, they came out with a great situation. You know, when you have, if, when you have, um, entities where there's related parties in, in, in various, uh, divisions, and for the veterans organizations, or any organization, you want that arms-length transaction, you want, and we do our diligence, we put it out to a, a quote process, and we work, got good quotes issued. Uh, I mean, it's a very good purchase, followed the purchasing rules. Uh, I have no concern at all about this purchase. I feel this is a, this is the way, you know, you handle the purchase, raise that first fee, you, this come in, lowest qualified bidder, won the bid, same people, good bid, you know?